Yeah. No, he's still not on yet.
What should people like? You're in the headlights.
I'm going to remind everybody just to please mute themselves. We're just waiting for one of the planning board alternate members to join the call. Jerome, do you have any update on Richard's progress getting on?
I don't know. My wife called him. He says he was ready to get on. I don't know. But he must be having trouble getting on.
Yeah.
Is there a certain number you gotta call?
Um, well, if you're calling in by phone, yes, but if you're on the computer, you should just be able to connect the link from the the email. But I'm going to try to call him.
You want the number?
I have it, Elaine. Thank you.
I'm getting, I'm trying to get him in. The code, you gotta put the code in.
I'm connected. They seem to be having trouble.
Here he is.
Awesome.
I think I'm on.
You are.
I see that. I see your, your head.
My.
And your glass.
Yeah, all right. Oh, there I am. All right. I don't, wait a minute, I don't hear anything though. Why?
You don't hear us? You don't hear me, Richard? Richard, this is Diane.
He's in a coma.
I can't, I can't find him on the screen.
He's there.
Okay, Richard, can you hear me now?
Diane, maybe he doesn't have his settings correct. His volume settings.
Most likely. Office over seventy, need a keeper.
Is he still on? I don't see him anymore.
He's gotta be on one of the other pages.
I'm looking. I don't see him on the list.
We have a corner, don't we?
You do.
We're keeping a lot of people waiting here.
Yeah. It's almost, um, it's about eleven minutes past seven. So Jerome, do you want to, uh? Do you want to get started? Yes. Jerome, can you unmute yourself?
I'll come with the order.
Okay. I have a flag for the pledge of allegiance. Oh, we should do roll call vote before we forget.
Please.
Armin Biladi.
Yeah.
Stephen Katz.
Here.
Chuck Millard.
Here.
Tony Mergo.
Here.
Brian Clark.
Here.
I'll call for Richard. Richard Buggiero. Not here. And Jerome Squatrito.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, Tony.
Uh, folks, please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States. America.
One nation, under God.
Indivisible, with liberty and justice.
God, one and all.
Zero, nine, three.
Uh, Ms. Chairman, first item on the agenda is the minutes from our, uh, November twenty twenty one, um, meeting.
Yeah.
Uh, I make a motion that we approve unless anyone has an objection.
I'll second here, second.
So Tony made the motion, Chuck Millard seconded it, roll call vote. Armin Biladi.
Bye.
Aye.
Stephen Katz.
Aye.
Chuck Millard.
Aye.
Tony Mergo.
Aye.
Jerome Squatrito.
Yeah. Aye.
Thank you.
Next item is, uh, the Bristol Yawn Mill, Yawn Mill, also known as Robin Rugg, major land development in public informational meeting and possible action by the board on the master plan review of the major land development for the redevelopment of the Robin Rugg Mill to be known as Bristol Yawn Mill located at one twenty five Fame Street. Proposal is for one hundred and fifty-one residential apartment units and approximately sixty-three hundred square feet of commercial space in the mill building. Proposal includes parking on the east side of Fame Street that is located approximately one hundred and thirty feet south of the intersection of Church and Fame Street. Planning Board also to make recommendation to the town council on a proposed change of zone request to amend the original zone change conditions on the mill property and to change the, the zone on the parking lot properties to a waterfront planned unit development. Property currently on a zone waterfront planned unit development with conditions. Waterfront and downtown zones and is also within the Bristol Historic District, Platteen Lot forty-one, forty-two, forty-three, forty-four, forty-nine, fifty, sixty, sixty-one, sixty-two, sixty-eight, seventy-one, seventy-three, seventy-four, and seventy-six. Owners Russ Russ Realty Company and Carrion Realty Company applicant Brady Sullivan Properties LLC.
Before you present, um, I just want to note, Mr. Buggiero has joined our meeting. So Mr. Richard Buggiero is present tonight. So Sean Martin, I, I don't know if you're going to be presenting. I can have you share the screen.
Yes, good evening, Director, and members of the planning board. I believe John McCoy, the applicant's legal representative is here as well.
I am. Thank you, Sean. Good evening, Diane, and Mr. Chairman, members of the board, staff, and members of the public. Just quick introduction of the team. Sean has introduced himself. Sean Martin is with Fuss and O'Neil, they're the project engineer. Chris Reynolds from Brady Sullivan Properties, the applicant, was intending to be with us here tonight, but late this afternoon emailed Sean and I to let us know that he is quite under the weather. So fortunately, he will not present, but this will be in Sean's more than capable hands. Just so you know, also Edward Pimental from Pimental Consulting is on this call as well. He is a land use consultant, prepared a report that was included with the packet that I think everybody has. And he's here tonight to answer any questions regarding the density issues or comprehensive plan. And also Joseph Lombardo is on this call. He's on by telephone, I believe. He did the fiscal impact report. In case any questions about that, he's more than happy to answer those questions. But I think since this is a public informational meeting and there may be people on this call who were at TRC, it's probably a good idea for Sean perhaps to start and give a quick overview of the project again, and maybe also possibly address a couple of the issues that came up in TRC that he's responded to since then. So that's probably, I think, the best way to start with Sean.
Okay, thank you, Mr. McCoy. I will make Sean a co-host and then he should be able to share his screen with us.
Are you able to see the screen, uh, members of the board?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so I've prepared a brief presentation with some slides to show content and context of the proposed redevelopment area. And I've also included a copy of the site plan and we can go through some of the elements of the site plan. And then as Mr. McCoy stated, go through some of the comments that we had received from the planning board, excuse me, the technical review committee. And, and really sort of introduce some of the, the talking points that we'd like to engage the planning board in tonight. Because there are some, some matters that are, what I would say unresolved as of the TRC meeting, and they really require, I think, the, the planning board's input and collaboration with the development team. So without further delay, we'll, we'll get started. This initial slide here is just to show the what we had photographed more than fourteen years ago as part of the initial master plan application that was submitted and approved by the town council at the time with a zone change application. The sites located on the west side of Fame Street and the east side of Fame Street and comprised of multiple parcels assembled into two sites that are separated by Fame Street. The, the properties that are located on the east side of Fame Street also has a small amount of frontage on Hope Street. The, the mill parcels also bordered by Bristol Harbor and Constitution Street to the south. Just to give you some overview of the site location. Zooming in a little bit to the aerial, um, of the, of the properties, you see in these yellow areas, the, what we're calling or will can refer to as the mill parcels, which are the parcels that are on the west side of Fame Street and bordered by the Bristol Harbor. There are multiple parcels that comprise this, uh, this mill parcel. And it's also the location of the historic mill complex. The properties on the east side of Fame Street again are multiple parcels assembled in, that would be assembled into one that are the proposed locations of the parking lot and retention of three existing buildings with mixed uses within them. This map was included with the master plan and what it shows is, uh, the zoning designations of the parcels. The mill parcel itself on the west side of Fame Street. Excuse me, Diane, could it be possible to mute that? Thank you. The parcels on the west side of Fame Street, you can see in this large block area, uh, is the waterfront PUD zone. And, uh, some of the parcels on the east side of Fame Street, um, as I'm outlining here, hopefully you can see me or see my, uh, my cursor are located within the waterfront zone. And the remainder of the parser, parcels, um, east of, of the zoning boundary are located in the downtown zoning district. So this is just to give you a, an overview of, of the zoning district and also the two hundred foot radius that's required for a better notification. Here's a view looking north, uh, from Constitution Street along the frontage of the building, uh, looking north on Fame Street and Bristol Harbor is to your left. Uh, the applicant is proposing to retain the building, all of the historic buildings and renovate them. There is one non-contributing building that was built, I believe, in the sixties. It's constructed of concrete masonry unit, uh, construction that will be demolished to allow access, uh, at the north end of the property. It's actually right adjacent to the Bristol Maritime Center. And here's a view of the building, the mill complex, uh, looking to the south, uh, along Fame Street. And to the right is the alley or driveway that, um, provides access to the Bristol Maritime Center. This is a view from Fame Street looking east of the, the parcels on the east side of Fame Street that would comprise, um, the proposed parking lot area. It's being used today as a parking lot and is a mix of asphalt pavement and then there's turf in some areas as well. And I'm going to show you some photos so you can get some, uh, for those of you who haven't seen it firsthand, you can see what it looks like, uh, from various angles. This photograph is, is a view. You can see the yellow building in the, in the background. That building is located on Hope Street. So this is a view looking to the northeast from the center of the parking lot parcels. We're gonna pan around so you can get some perspective, uh, of, of what the site looks like. Here's a view looking, uh, north within the middle of the parking lot. Again, you can see the white building with the chimneys off to the right. That, that building fronts on Hope Street. Oops, I'm sorry. Uh, and here's a view looking northwest. You can see the, uh, the, the Robin Rugg Mill complex in the distance. And please be aware that there are two cars that look almost exactly the same. They're both Chevys as well, and they're both SUVs. Just be aware that they are two different vehicles as we start to pan. You start to lose your perception of where we are. There it is. Uh, so this is a view looking to the southwest. Again, you can see, uh, not only the mill complex, um, towards the west, you can see, uh, the single family homes or multifamily homes in some cases that are fronting on Fame Street. Two of the buildings are within the, the, the project area and development site. And finally, uh, here's a view or two more photographs. Actually, here's a view looking south. And this shows you not only the condition of the property, but the fact that it's bordered by, uh, a cedar hedge or, or a revy hedge along the perimeter. And here's another view looking to the, to the southeast. I'm gonna zoom in, hopefully make it easier for everyone to see. And I will start with the mill site. We're starting at the north end of the mill site. This is, I will show you the, the location of the, the building that's going to be demolished. I just highlighted that in red. I will use a different shape here. So that's roughly where the existing building is that will be removed. Uh, the, the proposal is to, uh, provide some parking and access that will ultimately serve the, the commercial uses within the building. And it also provides driveway access to, um, park. It's also proposing parking within the building itself on the ground floor. Thank you. So the driveways here will provide access to indoor parking that will be provided for the residents and, um, will also include ADA parking, motorcycle parking, and bicycle parking. So there's a number of, of, of alternative parking spots, spots that would provide within the building itself. As you can see, most of the site is occupied actually by the building. And a portion of the property is, uh, at least within the site area, you can see is actually within the waterfront. Or is, has a, a seawall or a revetment actually along the, the western border of properties. There's actually very little open space that's available. CRM sees policy and really, I think, one of Bristol's objectives is to provide, uh, continuous public access along its waterfront. And the applicant is proposing in this instance to provide a public access easement along the shoreline inboard of the, of the revetment itself, which is composed of, of boulders. And, uh, would incorporate native grasses and plants and other, uh, plant materials to provide not only stormwater treatment, but some buffering between the waterfront itself and then the public access walkway. Uh, there is an enclosed, uh, space that's being considered as that's being considered for a, a dog run or a place where folks can take, uh, the pets and it'll be contained and can be managed and cleaned and, uh, and protect, uh, the coastal zone area and also provide some buffer between the public access area and, and the dog run. Um, there's also a bio-retention basin that's proposed. Uh, there's not a significant amount of space, as I mentioned. However, one of the, uh, stipulations that the water pollution control facility, uh, will have is that the project eliminates any stormwater connections that are, that are currently, uh, discharging to the sewer system. And the bio-retention basin is intended to accept some of that stormwater runoff from the roof. And, uh, that's just one element of the proposed stormwater management system as part of the project. As you can see, the, the public access way terminates at the north and south end. It terminates at the north end at the Bristol Maritime Center and at the south end at the Bristol Elks, uh, facility. Uh, the applicant does not own, uh, either of those properties. There is actually no, um, land within the development site that could provide continuous access to Constitution Street, for example, at the south or the alley or even the Maritime Center to the north. So at this time, the, the proposal is to, is to provide and improve, um, these facilities at least to the property lines. And moving to the, uh, the east side of Fame Street. Zoom in a little bit more so you may have difficulty, uh, seeing everything that's going on with all the line work. The, the main function of these parcels is, is to provide parking for the mill complex and redevelopment. However, the two buildings, as I mentioned, that are located on Fame Street will still retain parking for them for their uses. Lot forty-nine has two residential units, lot fifty. So the south has one residential unit and, you know, both uses will have parking. Uh, and then lot seventy-one in the upper right-hand corner or the northeast corner of the site is, uh, proposed to have one residential unit and retain its commercial uses. So those are all pre-existing uses that will be retained as part of the project. Uh, the site is proposing four access points, two primary driveways that will serve, um, the residents to, to park in the lot. Uh, there's a shared driveway between lots forty-nine and fifty that exists today that will be utilized to access parking for those, um, those parcels. And, uh, an existing driveway to Hope Street will be retained and used as an entrance in from Hope Street only. And you'll see that as you come in from Hope Street, there are five spaces that are rear entry. Those rear entry spaces are similar to the ones that are near Independence Park. Uh, the rest of the spaces are perpendicular and, um, would retain all the landscaping that you saw in the photographs. The intent is to keep as much of the existing buffer as possible and then augment it, um, with trees, shrubs, grasses, and other plant materials to comply with, uh, Bristol's, um, zoning ordinances. Uh, the same thing would hold true for, um, as part of landscaping and lighting. The lighting we anticipate will be dark sky compliant with full cutoff fixtures at residential scale, so not large, very tall, um, light poles. The parking will also have a stormwater management system that will be designed in accordance with, uh, the Brightham Stormwater, um, manual. And the stormwater system will have a connection. What will happen is the stormwater will be treated and controlled within, um, the parking lot areas. And then will be connected to a new drain pipe within Fame Street that will run south to Constitution Street and then have a discharge or a new outfall to Bristol Harbor. And there are no existing storm drains within, uh, Fame Street today. Uh, there is no stormwater management system for the existing parking lot on these parcels. So we anticipate the, the project will actually provide a betterment in reducing the amount of, um, runoff and actually treating all the runoff. And the project will also have all your new utilities. Um, as I mentioned, the water pollution control requires separation of any storm drain connections to the, to the sewer system. It will have a new water system. And mechanical, and that will handle all the utilities and, and meters and, and, and that sort of thing. Now, on this parking lot site, I'm going to, um, highlight it so you can see it a little bit better. This area is proposed as the solid waste storage and recycling center. That was an area that, um, the TRC identified as a cause for concern. And I think some of the public also submitted, uh, comments related to that location. Uh, the applicant is open to, um, an alternative location that we'd be happy to discuss with the board. One of the locations that we had discussed was, um, on the mill site. And somewhere in this vicinity. Uh, currently where I'm showing the, the potential location of the dumpster and solid waste storage, there's a transformer that's proposed. So that would be screened from the street. Uh, some of you may know that, um, as with the building, um, all site utilities need to be designed in accordance with, uh, flood hazard zone construction. The site is within, within a flood hazard zone. Uh, there are some exemptions for stored buildings, but any new construction modifications and things like that will have to incorporate flood hazard zone, uh, construction standards to extent, uh, practical. So, point that out. Go through some of the, uh, the questions and comments from the TRC. I don't want to speak for the TRC, but I prepared a response to some of the, the questions and comments that were submitted, um, by Ms. Williamson. Following the TRC meeting and my letter is dated January fourth, two thousand and twenty-two to Ms. Williamson. Uh, the Bristol Water, uh, Bristol County Water Authority, uh, asked that the applicant install one water service which would be located within the building, would be in an heated enclosure and, and and, uh, would serve all the water uses for the, for the building renovation. Uh, there was no issue or concern with, with complying with that requirement. And, um, although it's an option that BCWA, um, allows an enclosure, like a vault or something like that, there's actually a like a vault or something like that, it was actually above ground, would also be a poss- comply with their requirements. But we anticipate the the water meter facility will be located inside in a mechanical room. As I mentioned, the Water Pollution Control Department had some questions and comments. The primary one was the sewer separation that I had mentioned. They'd also asked that backwater valves be installed and that there would be an inspection process to ensure that the the water and short connections have been disconnected and that the construction complies with with all of their requirements. So they wanted a kind of a post-construction follow-up and then also verification letter from from an engineer that those modifications were in fact completed. The other comments we received were from the the planning board's peer review consultant, professional engineer, par corporation, which prepared a letter, review letter dated December twenty-first, two thousand twenty-one. The engineers' review identified multiple permits that would be required at the preliminary plan stage. And we acknowledge that those permits would be required, including but not limited to the DEM stormwater, soil erosion, sediment control and CRM C ascent. There was a comment related to the dumpster, as I had already mentioned, that also came from the peer review. And as I mentioned, the we're amenable to looking at alternative locations, subject to the planning board's comments and opinions about that. The transformer, as I had mentioned, would have to comply with flood zone construction. So this transformer will have to be elevated above the grade today to provide that protection. And as I had stated at the TRC meeting, the project will also consider sea level rise in the design when it does get to that point at the preliminary plan stage. So setting critical infrastructure at or one foot above, as is typically the standard. It it would meet the minimum code standards, but as I had stated, we would propose incorporating additional measures to ensure that the facilities be protected for a long period of time to address sea level rise. The applicant also is amenable to another comment that was brought up by the TRC and the peer review consultant. And it pertains to the access from Hope Street. Just zoom in there. The access way is only about eleven feet wide. So it's sufficient for one way in. And the concern here is that this corridor, this driveway would be a desirable pedestrian connection point to downtown. So the applicant is amenable to discussing alternatives to this location. And I think one of the suggestions was that perhaps this could be made entirely a pedestrian corridor and not allow vehicles to connect through it. There's a question about whether there are sufficient ADA parking spaces provided. And what I had stated in the letter, we'll state today, is that there are some ADA spaces provided within the interior of the building. The building will also accommodate significantly more ADA spaces because there are unusable spaces for parking that are within the building that would still provide access aisles and and loading zones and things of that nature to comply with the ADA parking requirement. So we don't anticipate loss of parking as a result of complying with the ADA standard. The question about whether there was a loading space required, proposed, there is a loading space within this interior courtyard that I had pointed out earlier. That loading space is actually right over here. And this highlighted area. And lastly, one of the other comments was whether the the quantity of parking spaces, and I will show you the the parking plan for the building. Whether the quantity of the parking spaces within the building was feasible based on turning movements, aisle widths, locations of columns and and other obstructions and things of that nature. And what we had proposed is that the applicant would provide a turning analysis and assessment of of the adequacy of this, the turning movements that are possible within this parking facility. And the last question or comment that was issued by the TRC and is also submitted by the public is that the there was a prior study that we had conducted for the original master plan. And what we had proposed is conducting an entirely new study, re-engaging as we had done then with the town consultant on selecting the intersections that will be used in the analysis and the time of year at at which the the traffic counts would be obtained. And that would be done to address concerns about whether we would be looking at peak travel periods throughout the season. And of course, the times of day are standardized, but we're amenable to working with the consultant and Par was the consultant on that original application. So we'd be happy to do that again as part of this project. John, is there anything else that you would like me to cover at this point? Do you think that covers most of it?
Just making sure I'm muted. I think you covered pretty much all the engineering points, Sean.
I haven't gone into the zoning relief or anything, any of that stuff, which I would be happy to to articulate the the information that was submitted.
Yeah, why don't you go ahead with that and then maybe we can pause and see if there's initial questions from the board.
So as I mentioned in the application, in two thousand and eight, the Town Council approved a residential density of the PUD of ninety-eight units through a zone change for the mill complex. And it applied to plat ten lots forty-two, sixty, sixty-one, sixty-two and seventy-three. And that was concurrent with a master plan application. The zone change incorporated certain development conditions and and relief from zoning. The proposal here would increase, as you had heard at the beginning of the of the meeting, the ninety-eight units to one hundred and fifty-one units. In addition, some specific relief would be requested as part of the application, some of which is consistent with the original decision. The first item of relief listed in this master plan application is from Article eight, section twenty-eight dash two-five-one, subsection one, off-street parking is required on the same property as a development, except as permitted by the town under section twenty-eight dash two-five-five. Number two, Article eight, section twenty-eight dash two fifty-one, two A, off-street parking space dimensions must be ten feet wide by eighteen feet long. The proposed spaces are nine feet wide by eighteen feet long. Some tandem parking spaces are also included and would not comply with the dimensional requirements of this section. The the tandem parking spaces are located right in the central part of the parking lot. Number three, Article eight, section twenty-eight dash two-five-one, two A, off-street parking aisles must be twenty-four feet wide. The proposed parking aisles are twenty-two feet wide. Number four, Article eight, section twenty-eight dash two-five-one, two A, double line parking spaces are required in parking lots with more than twenty spaces. The proposed parking lots use single line markings due to the narrower space width. Number five, Article eight, section twenty-eight dash two-five-one, section four, driveways must provide a minimum twelve feet width for each lane of traffic using the driveway. The proposed driveways provide lanes eleven feet wide. Number six, Article nine, section twenty-eight dash two-eight-four D one, at least twenty-five percent of the site must be reserved for commercial, institutional and or public use. The exact method for determining the percentage of the site that must be allocated for these uses is not known. Proposed commercial use, the proposed commercial use, which is sixty-three hundred square feet, is significantly less than twenty-five percent of the proposed building reuse based on the gross floor area. Number seven, excuse me, Article nine, section twenty-eight dash two-eight-four D two, residential density for historic buildings greater than one hundred thousand square feet in the W zone, contributing buildings on the National Historic Register located in W zone that are in excess of one hundred thousand square feet of gross floor area shall have a minimum gross floor area to dwelling unit of two thousand two hundred and fifty square feet per dwelling unit. The proposed density is approximately nine hundred and forty-one square feet. I'd like to come back to that one in a moment. Number eight, Article nine, section twenty-eight dash two-eight-four G, at least ten percent of the land area must be reserved for public or institutional use. Although public use will be provided along the shoreline, that area is expected to be significantly less than the ten percent of the total land area on the mill complex site. No public or institutional uses are planned for the off-street parking site. And then these are these are checklist items. The applicant requests that the requirement for architectural elevations and perspectives be waived because of the existing and historic nature of the building that's not going to be modified. And the existing view sheds within the within the area will not be affected or changed. The applicant requests that the draft legal documents also be provided at the preliminary plan instead of the master plan, primarily due to the scale and complexity of the project. And we understand also that this master plan process may further develop requirements that would affect future legal documents. And that is the last of the items of relief that were requested in the application. And I can turn it back over to you, Diane, or or Mr. Chair. Unless you have anything to add, John. Thank you.
No, I I think it's probably appropriate this time to take any questions from the planning board members or from you, Diane, and then we can respond to those and proceed in that manner.
So Jerome, would you like me to do a roll call vote to see if any of the board members have questions at this time? You're muted.
Hey, and you mean just a polling of the board, not a vote?
Right, well, I was just gonna do like a round robin to see if they had any questions, but.
Right. But not a vote, just.
No, 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 just a round robin too, because I feel like they're gonna, it's gonna be, you know, awkward to.
Yes.
Know when it's their turn to talk.
So why don't you do that? Why don't you call on the board members one at a time?
Okay, so, oh, I'm sorry, I'm I'm sorry, that's why you're correcting me. I said roll call vote, yeah. Armin Biladi?
Yes, I have several questions.
Okay.
Are you going through the the whole board before anybody asks questions?
Well, my thought was I would just like call on you. And if you had questions, you could ask them at this time.
Sure.
Just the just the kind of.
I'm willing to do that.
Okay.
Just one of the things that hasn't come up at TRC or any place else, as far as I'm concerned, there are some brownstone issues that that need to be mitigated, they're in process, I would assume. Is that correct?
Mr. Blight.
Brownfields, Mr. Biladi? You said brownstones, you mean brownfields issues?
Brownfield issues, yes.
Sean, you already.
I mean, is any anybody wish to respond to that?
Yes, the the phase one site assessment was submitted with the application, so that's a screening level study. And following a screening level study, what happens is items of environmental concern are identified and then addressed through a phase two that follows the phase one and it and results in further investigation and and mitigation with with DM. Basically, you're in a in a program with DM that requires certain steps for you to take to to remedy or remediate the site. The same would be true for removing hazardous building materials as part of the renovation.
Okay, all right, so so you guys are on that.
Yep, and the 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 phase one assessment was made public record in the application. Typically, they're not, but this one, the town requires it.
Okay. I guess my first issue is discussing the parking. I know there are a number of spaces within the building, a number of spaces on the east side of the building. But there are a number of exceptions that have been requested. Can can someone tell me how many additional parking spaces have been planned for with the exceptions versus without?
Mr. Biladi, all of the spaces are at least nine feet by eighteen. None of them are ten feet wide, except the ADA spaces, which would be required to be wider.
Yeah, well, that's not really the question. My question is, how many? How many additional spaces do you get with the exceptions that have been requested versus?
Versus a compliant spaces.
Correct.
Yeah, we haven't done that calculation. There are there are a hundred and sixty-two parking spaces required under zoning and there are three hundred and eleven proposed at at this point.
Say for a hundred and fifty units, there's a hundred and sixty-two?
Right, required.
And
and that includes the commercial spaces too.
Okay, and and you're providing with the exceptions. What was that number?
Three hundred and eleven. So not quite two spaces per unit.
Okay, which were which are which are not really required at this point, okay. I may want to go back to that another time. There there are some slips that were marine slips that were allocated to the building in the original approval. And I only bring that up because this application like would like to take advantage of a lot of the exceptions or the lot, a lot of the things that were were agreed to back in two thousand and eight. What's going on with those slips? Where what's happening with them?
Mr. Biladi, I don't have the answer to that question. I don't know if you have that, Mr. McCoy.
My understanding, and as I mentioned, Chris Reynolds is not on this call tonight, but my understanding on the Marina slips is that that is something that the applicant may be able to to work with the town on, but I just wanted to.
I would appreciate some discussion on that, only because, I mean, I think if I can recall properly, the the original approvals, you know, those slips were 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 going to be utilized for about twenty-two thousand square feet of commercial space. And based on what you're looking for now in terms of the kinds of commercial space or the kinds of businesses that might be attracted, I don't think, you know, I don't think that I've taken my boat to go to get my tooth full. You know.
I guess it depends where you might come from, Mr. Biladi.
I guess, but 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 probably rare occasion.
I understand that, I made a note of that as a follow-up item.
All right, thank you. Let's see, nothing's happening with the facade of. Let's see, um, n- nothing's happening with the facade of the building, is, am I correct?
That's correct.
So, I mean, other than the windows and.
With the windows, yep, everything will have to be compliant with state historic.
Okay. Have, has anybody? And maybe even based on some of your other projects. Has anybody determined what they think the impact on the school system might be? With this development?
It's a question for. Um, one of the other members of the team, John.
Yeah, uh, Mr. Lombardo is on this call and could speak to that. I would just preface it by saying that, um. Uh, I was, I was involved with the Tourister project, Mr. Balati, and I know. Uh, that on that project, there were very few schoolchildren, uh, in that facility, but.
Which project, John?
The Tourister project in Warren.
Okay.
For you toward, uh, but I'm gonna let, uh, Mr. Lombardo, if he's, he's on here, if he could maybe speak briefly to that.
Mr. Chairman, if I may ask a question before, uh, Mr. Lombardo starts.
Brian, is that you?
That's me, yeah, Brian Clark.
That's fine.
Is that okay with, um, with the chairman?
He's muted. Jerome, you have to unmute.
Jerome, you need to unmute.
Well, I'll just, I'll tell you what my, my, my thought process is here is, I would like to, um, obviously, we all have questions to ask, but I would. I would like to make a mo- well, not emotion, but maybe I think it would make sense for us to, um, keep the fiscal impact study. Portion. Of these questions separate from our other questions and that would kind of get into the school systems and. Cause there's a lot of questions within the financial impact study that was provided to us that I have. But I also have questions on parking and zoning and things of that nature. So I'm not sure if it would make sense to kind of keep them in two separate piles.
Brian, I'm not sure I understand your statement, but.
Your, 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 your question was something to do with the, with the, uh, amount of school. The impact on the school system, that's within this financial impact study that I'm having my hands here that was provided.
Okay, I, 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 I'll hold off then.
Okay.
Let me see, my last question was. Oh, one of the things that, i- as I've been going through all the documentation, trying to recall. Issues that, that took place during the previous approval, which. Remember, I'm only going back to that. I, I realize this is new, uh, with different rules and so on, but. You guys are trying to use a lot of the exceptions that were made, um. During the original approval. One of the things.
On this call.
Say again?
Armin, I think that was somebody I needed to mute.
Oh, okay.
Sorry.
One of the things that I remember happening. Was that, a- after the council. Uh, uh, agreed to some zoning changes and, and, and things of that nature. Um, we asked, the, the planning board, I believe, asked for, um. Uh, the documents that were in writing s- uh, said something to the effect. Um, that we were gonna get whatever percentage we were getting at that time. Um, either, uh, onsite or offsite. And I am, I, I, I realized that this developer. Um, it doesn't deal with, uh, that and most of their, most of their projects. So one of the do a deed, deed and, uh, I'm not, not a deed and loop, but a, uh, fee and loop. Um. My only question is, is, and it might be to Diane actually, or, or Andy. Um. Has anybody looked at that and, and why is that changing?
Actually, I believe that the two thousand eight decision had a condition to allow either onsite, offsite, or by fee and loop. It was conditioned to.
Yes, so, um, this is Diane Williamson. I think what Armin is referring to is, um. The zone change allowed the three different options and when it went to the master plan for master plan phase approval. At that time, the applicant had, um, um, decided to pursue the onsite or offsite. Options. And so the planning boards, the planning board's condition at the master plan level, uh, back then was to, um. Just ask the applicant to just indicate where the offset units would be and, um. At preliminary, at the preliminary phase, they were to, you know, provide a little bit more detail on the, um, the location of the offsite units. And so I think that's what Mr. Balati is referring to, that, um, the master plan decision on the previous, um, application.
Okay.
Obviously, um, there's, no one has an answer for that at this point, so. I guess we just wait for the answer, but that's exactly right, Diane. That's where I was heading. And other than that, I, I don't have anything at more at this time.
You're muted, Diane. You're still muted, Diane.
Oh, thank you. Um, so the next, um, planning board member is, um, Stephen Katz.
Good evening. Um, I too have a number of questions. I suspect that, uh. Those of us on the planning board will have very similar questions as well as the public, so I'll just run through a few of them. And, um, actually. Um, I understand what Brian had suggested, but I wanted to kind of dive into that, uh, the whole revenue thing, cause that. Uh, there's a lot of concerns, there's a lot of positives in this. I, I, I think there isn't a single person in the town of Bristol that. Doesn't want to see this happen, but we all want to see it happen the right way. So, that being said. Um, I, I probably tops on my list as a taxpayer in this town is looking at that negative revenue town. That's a substantial amount of money that will cost the town. I think, uh, you folks have to explain it in detail how you derive those numbers. From my understanding of this, and I'm not a finance guy, I'm, I do legal work for my company, but I, I don't do the finances. Um, from my limited understanding, it looks like this is driven by potential school costs, municipal costs, uh, a number of things. And, uh, I realize that I live in the state of Rhode Island and not in Southern California where I used to live. But I can tell you that in California, it is a state law that. When a developer comes into a town to build a housing development as an example. They are also responsible for building a school. They are also responsible for building roads. They are also responsible. For providing the necessary infrastructure to support that housing development. Now, that may not be the law in Rhode Island, but, um, I have a deep, deep concern that the taxpayers in this town are gonna get saddled. With excessive taxes to pay for this negative revenue. And, and I really would love to have you guys, uh, address that and, and talk to us about that.
Yeah, and, and Mr. Katz, I, I looked at that report and certainly noted the same things that you do. Uh, and I had a conversation with Mr. Lombardo and I'm gonna turn it over to him very briefly and very quickly, but. The way he explained to me that this report is really the best estimate of revenue at this time in the project. It's kind of a snapshot that's required at master plan level. It's a piece of information, but it does not take into account such things as secondary impact of spending by residents in, in the building. And for the immediate area. Um, and so those are the kind of things it does not take into account, but. Mr. Lombardo's on the call, if he could jump in and kind of fill in the gaps that I don't have. Joe, are you there?
Yes, I am. Can anybody hear me?
We can hear you loud and clear.
Loud and clear. That's great. Uh, good evening to everyone. Uh, for the record, my name is Joseph Lombardo. Planning consultant, uh, with home office in West Hurley, Rhode Island. Um, I'll try to just give you a brief, um, understanding of how this report is put together and I certainly understand your questions. Um, what we try to do is, is do two things really. One is to estimate what we feel is a likely revenue. Uh, any project has to a community. And when you look at this one, um, we did, we did spend some considerable amount of time trying to figure out. What the town tax assessor may actually, um, put a number on this project when it's done. And if you see what I, what we did there, it really just has a, a, a ballpark estimate of a hundred thousand dollars of assessed value per unit. Now, we did look at the American Tourister project. And we took a similar approach to what that's assessed at. And we use that number. Now, I'm sure that the developers will tell you they're gonna spend probably a lot more than that. But it's not necessarily what they're spending on the project. It's basically what the town's tax assessor would put a number on this project if it was all over the ground today. So that, that drives, uh, that number and, and maybe it's low. Uh, we usually try to be conservative. Um, but certainly, um, at a master plan level, we're, we're addressing a, a checklist item that requires. Some, some look at this project from, you know, where we are today with it. Um, it's certainly possible that if, if we were to sit down with the assessor, uh, with project plans. Um, that we could, you know, revise that number depending on what they, uh, the assessor's office comes up with. But with, so I'm just telling you that we used the American Tourister as a model on that to try to give you an idea what it might generate in revenue. So that's the revenue side. That, that can be, um, potentially, uh, improved. Uh, the number may be a lot more realistic if the assessor weighs in on it and takes a good look at the project. Um, but that's the revenue side and that's a, that's normally a straightforward calculation based on what we think. It will be assessed at. That's not necessarily what the developer's gonna spend. Um, and just to address on the, on the expense side. I use a pretty straightforward, um, what we call a per capita or per resident. Um, number on what it costs for each resident of the town of Bristol. Uh, based on the, your municipal budget. And you'll see a number there that's, that's based on that. And I also somewhat reduce that number. To eighty-five percent because this is already an existing part of the community that has a lot of. Uh, roadways and utilities, uh, in place. Uh, and also some of the services that the, the project will require will be taken care of privately. But even with that, uh, the number then relates to how many people. We expect to reside here and of that, how many are school age children? So two parts to that. Um, so the number of people are within the hundred and fifty-one units. We estimated it just under three hundred, two hundred and ninety-five. And that's based on occupancy of the various size units with num- different numbers of bedrooms. We also took a very close look at American Tourister. A similar type project generates for people and school age children. And what we were able to do is create a, um, a blend, what we call a blended average based on the number of. Uh, types of units in those hundred and fifty-one units. And so that, that generates. Uh, twenty school age children. And I'm sure you all know, and I think any Rhode Islander knows, the cost of education is high in our state. Um, and we use numbers, uh, from your regional school district on what it costs to educate per student after. Uh, school aid, uh, from the state is factored in. And so that number, that high number on the red, on the expense side is generated by the nearly three hundred people that will occupy the building. Um, and use municipal services and the twenty school age children that we would anticipate. Uh, would be residents of that building. And so that's what creates the disparity between the two numbers. Um, and again, it's a, it's a, it's a first look at this. Uh, I feel pretty confident on the, on the expense side as far as, um, you know, what it costs to have a municipal. Uh, but municipal expenses are per, per resident. And we certainly know what the school age children number is right from your, your school department. So, I, if that just gives you an, an overlook on how we came up with the numbers, I understand when we're, whenever we see a negative number, we don't like it. Um, but the project does offer, uh, as John points out. Uh, you know, other secondary benefits to the community well beyond, uh, just the tax revenue upfront is. With that many people living there, there's, there's considerable secondary impacts to the community. That are a little bit difficult to quantify, but I think you, we would all understand. That those folks would be shopping in local establishments, going to local restaurants, uh, purchasing gasoline. Going to the grocery stores and it just generates, uh, a considerable number of secondary impacts to the community as well. So that's probably the best I can do at this point, um, certainly remotely. And trying to answer your questions, but we could certainly, um, you know, if we get to the preliminary stage and the board wants to take another look at this. We can take some time and work with your assessor. Uh, we can try pinning down some, some of these expense numbers a little better if necessary. And maybe give you a different, uh, or revised report that it may make it look a little bit better. But it is a great project for the community. I know Bristol quite well and have friends there. Uh, in fact, I was just down in that waterfront area this summer. So it, it would be a great improvement to the community, um, but the numbers are what they are at this point.
John, thank you. I, I do appreciate that. Um, do you happen to know if? If you were to take a, a point in time like today in the town of Warren, it's. Is Warren in a negative revenue situation because of the Tourister Mill Building?
Uh, I, I, I don't think I could answer that. Uh, they, as I said, they have, let me just, uh, look. That has two hundred and twenty units, so it's bigger. Um, and they do use that same similar number of an assessment. Um, hundred thousand per unit roughly. So, you know, it's possible. I don't know if their tax rate is similar to, to Bristol's. I would assume that it is, it could even be a little higher. Um, so it's possible.
I, I think their tax rate is a little bit higher. Joe, this, um, McCoy again, um, is, is there another factor too about? Secondary benefit, um, due to the fact this is an existing building that's empty versus new construction?
Well, yes, I mean, that's one other thing to, to, to highlight. Thank you, John. Um. You know, we, we, you, you can think of this as a, if this was a vacant building and whatever taxes it's generating today. Um, versus what it will generate when all the improvements are made. Or if this was just a vacant lot. So, you know, a- a- again, it's like, what does the, what does the assessor have this value at right now? And then you're gonna add, you know, millions of dollars of improvements to it. Uh, it's certainly gonna improve its valuation. Um, it's just, uh, uh, at this point. Um, we were using another example to try to give the town an idea what it might generate a revenue, and it may be a higher number than that, but. Um, you know, unfortunately, until it's constructed and the assessor then finally sits down and looks at it. Uh, you might not know what that number is.
Fair enough. I, I, I appreciate that. Um. So, uh, just a couple of more of my questions. Um, and I'm sure this is probably a question on a number of folks' minds, um, so, uh. Today versus when this project was presented before the town council. Uh, several years ago and approved, um, we're now looking at about a fifty percent increase in residences. Um. How do you, how do you sell that to this town? Because now you're talking about. You're now talking about a significantly higher density. Um, potentially higher traffic, obviously more expenses. Does the facility, which is, this leads into my third question. How do we address all of the infrastructure concerns? And, and in the TRC notes, um. It, we noted in, in this TRC report. Um, go out and I'll, and I'll quote, going forward, the TRC will want to see that infrastructure can support the number of units proposed. That is the most important aspect to. That is the most important aspect to consider. Parenthetically, water, sewage, parking, et cetera. Any approval of the zone change application will be presented to the town council will dictate the number of units and overall density, so. Uh, you can see our concern. Um, as a planning board, um, and I'd like you to address that if you could.
Sean, you want to talk about that? Before you do, uh, Mr. Katz, I don't know if you were attending the TRC at all or not. But I know one of the comments struck me that came up. And uh, John, you, John Regal was sitting with me and. It came up a comment that that ninety-eight unit figure. Uh, that came up in two thousand eight was kind of. Figured out. Backwards, it was almost an arbitrary figure by using the square footage. But I think you're right. I think what came out of the TRC is that we need to show the infrastructure supports this density. And I think Mr. Pimentel's report does talk about that and as far as the infrastructure itself, I'll let Sean weigh in on that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Um. When I was discussing uh, water pollution control facilities request to disconnect. Roof drainage and other sorts of drainage that were connected or may be connected to the sewer. The primary reason for that is it is. I'm sure some of you know is that that water ends up in the treatment facility and has to get treated at a cost. Unnecessarily. And. It does take up capacity in the existing sewer system. Peak flow rates during storm events tend to be much, much higher than peak flow rates in wastewater generation. So our expectation is that disconnecting stormed sewers from the sanitary sewer will actually. Allow a greater capacity within the existing sewer system. And as I mentioned earlier as well, the, the town's going to require. Uh, verification that the disconnections were actually completed. And the installation, the construction was done in accordance with their standards. So that's one element of protecting the existing infrastructure and uh, accommodating. Which we believe it will accommodate the capacity of the, the facility. We've already checked with Bristol um, County Water Authority. And they feel that there's adequate capacity in the water system as well to support the project. Um, other utilities like gas and, and electricity, those things. Happen a little bit further down the road. They have to happen at the preliminary plan stage when. Mechanical engineers, plumbing engineers get involved in the project and we get to generate. Electrical demands and, and, and gas demands and things of that nature. But the utilities, and as I mentioned also, there is a, the stormwater infrastructure that doesn't exist today that would be built by the applicant. As a betterment to, to Fame Street frankly. And lastly, on the traffic. Component. The study that will be done at the preliminary plan stage will identify. Issues at the selected intersections and those intersections will be selected in collaboration with the town's engineer. You know, time of year and all that stuff, just so that uh, the town feels comfortable that the study will be done at an appropriate time. Will address intersections of concern. And that mitigation measures will be implemented. I don't know what those mitigation measures could be. But I will say that. This site. Is from an urban development perspective. Is one of the best you could pick just simply because Bristol is so walkable. You have access to the, to the bike path, you access the parks and recreation facilities, the downtown. I understand not every need uh, by a resident will be met in the downtown area. They'll have to travel to go to grocery shopping, for example. But there's a lot of goods and services that are available to residents here to help reduce the amount of trips per day. And I think that's just one of the desirable things about living in downtown Bristol is that. Um, it's just a great place to be. And access all those services. So. Yes, um. The traffic or transportation impacts will have to be, have to be contemplated and thoroughly analyzed. And I also know that the town's consultant will review the results of that report. As part of the project.
Okay, gentlemen, thank you. I, I have nothing further at this point.
Thank you, Ms. Getz.
Okay, so the next board member up would be Chuck Mallard.
Uh, thank you, Diane. Yeah, I have a series of questions. First, I'd like to address a couple of the things that have already come up. Mr. Martin said that the. Required number of parking spaces is a hundred and sixty-two. Is that correct?
Yes.
Uh, we have three hundred and ten. Is that correct?
Three hundred and eleven.
Alright, so it boggles my mind. To uh, ask why? If we have twice as many spaces as we need, we're making the spaces smaller. It seems to me that we can. Clearly have a ten foot space with a, with a double line and still come within the, well within the one hundred and sixty-two.
That's correct. The, the relief.
I don't understand why either one of those. Requests for advance are even, even on the table since we don't need.
Yeah, um, well, I'll give you, I'll give you a few reasons. Uh, the first main thing is that. Especially in the downtown area. And this is not the first one to request relief from parking dimensions, and the reason is that. Large parking spaces while appropriate for a suburban area tend to consume more land than necessary.
Not gonna happen here.
What's that?
That's not gonna happen here. We're not using any more land.
Yep, and one of the other concerns from the board at the time and. The board hasn't expressed its, uh, its. Opinions at this point is that. It does provide more off-street parking to retain any on-street parking that may be available to. Residents who are visiting the area, visiting restaurants and that sort of thing. It's ensuring and providing a buffer that there will be enough parking off-site to serve the proposed uses.
You're gonna offer uh, off-street parking to people who want to go to restaurants but are not members of the uh, development?
No, I think what I was just saying is that. Residents or visitors of residents will have enough parking to serve those uses, both the commercial and the residence. And not use spaces that might be otherwise used by uh, by other members of the public.
If you went to the ten foot space with the two, two, with the double line. How many uh? How many parking spaces could you put in? You'd still be over the one, one sixty-two required.
Yeah, that, that was the same question Mr. Bellotti had. I don't, we have not done that calculation to determine how many spaces.
It's, it's surprising, it's surprising to me that, that an issue that's this. This, uh, you know. This upfront hasn't been addressed by your, your organization. I would think of them, the first things you want to do is be able to defend. Um, a, a request for uh, a, a relief that you don't need. So I think, you know, number, number one, from my point of view. On this issue would be how many parking spaces you would have with the normal. Ten foot, two, uh, double line. And you know, that's, that's a number I think you have to present to us, not tonight, but soon.
Yep, I, I, I would like the board to consider uh, my statements about good urban planning and how. Parking spaces, that, you know, dimensional requirement for parking spaces that's ten feet wide in a downtown zone. Is unusual, um. And, but it is, it is the town's uh, ordinance. I understand that. But it does provide an opportunity here to protect. Uh, and provide enough parking only for the development, but for Fame Street.
Well, I think if you provided us with those numbers, we could make that decision, but right now, that's just your. Your opinion being directed to us. I mean, I'd like to see the two numbers so we could decide whether it's best urban, urban planning for our, for our.
All, all due respect, yeah, I, that is something we can, we can provide for the planning board, but it's also my professional opinion. And I've done dozens of these types of projects in downtown and suburban areas. And I, I, I'm only presenting to the board that. The spaces and the benches that we provided are more than adequate to, to, to provide, um, you know, not only safety, but. Adequate parking for the facility. But. We'd be more than happy to provide the board with that number that Mr. Bellotti, that you have asked for.
I appreciate that. The next, the next uh, item that sort of comes to mind to me is the number of units. In total. Why? Why would we go from? Uh, ninety-eight to one fifty-one. Uh, other than to maximize the profit at the expense of the town? This gets back to Mr. Lombardo's. Uh, analysis. That puts a, I presume his analysis puts a best case. Best face case uh, on your development when he comes up with a number that gives us a three hundred thousand dollar deficit. If this is the best we can do. From the developer, I think we probably as a board should be really concerned that the number is going to come in worse because I. Uh, it, it seems to me that if you're putting your best face on it, uh, we've got nowhere to go but down and at three hundred K. It's very hard for me to, uh. Ask individual homeowners to subsidize a developer's profit on something like this. I uh, I really think this is absolutely key. You've created a, a blizzard here. Ten pounds of poop and a five pound bag, and now you're asking us for all kinds of, uh. Uh, waivers to make it work for you, but not necessarily for us. I think it's, I think the neighborhood. Is going to be greatly impacted just by the number of people who are all of a sudden there. It's, it's a quiet area and, you know, I should, I should preface, I should have prefaced this by saying that. I've been a big fan of developing this property since, since it first came up. But it has to be the right development. It's been sitting there for a hundred years, underused. And there is no rush for us to, to bring in something that we're going to be stuck with forever and we're going to pay an incredible amount of money for every year forever. So unless you guys come back with a, with a number that's uh. A lot better than three hundred K. Um, I can't really even conceive of, of putting that many units in there. It just doesn't, it just doesn't make any sense to me. The, uh, the original, um. Alignment for the ninety-eight units was based on twenty-five, twenty-two hundred and fifty square feet. Now you want to put nine hundred and forty-one square foot units in there. This is, these are like, uh. Uh, dorm rooms, a little, little, uh, little hotel rooms compared to what we were originally contemplating with, uh, with ninety-eight units. So, um. I think. At this point, I mean, I'm going to have a lot more to say about this in the, in the future, but going forward, I think, oh, one more thing, I'm sorry. If the, uh, the dumpster, the dumpster unit is definitely being moved. Is that something we can assume? Cause a forty by sixty. Section in the middle of sidewalk there for, for dumpsters just doesn't seem to make any sense to me. So I, 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 do we have the? Uh, the, of the developers pretty uh, confident on moving that to the north side?
The developer had responded to the TRC that there'd be amenable to moving the dumpster and. We look for the planning board's input on that as well. And I, I would like to clarify one other thing. The nine hundred and forty-one square feet was listed in the original, original application. And that's the square footage based on the number of dwelling units. It's not the square footage of each, each. Apartment. Some of those units are actually smaller than that, some are bigger.
That's an average?
No, the, um, let me just clarify, the, the, the number of, uh, the square footage, um. Uh, per dwelling unit. For the building. So it's basically, uh, the gross floor area divided by the number of units. Is actually fifteen hundred and five square feet per unit. But you'll see in the application, then the architectural drawings that were provided, there are some units that are in the six hundred plus square foot range. There are some. Uh, fifteen hundred square feet. Uh, there are some that are more than seventeen hundred square feet. Um, there is a demand for smaller units. There are one bedroom, smaller units, um, something that's affordable too. For, for many folks, it's not just. The quote unquote regulated affordable housing that's in demand. It's something that, um, that folks don't qualify for affordable housing can still afford. So I just wanted to clarify the, the, the square footage density calculation.
So, so, but there are, there are no units anywhere near twenty-two fifty, right?
No, and, and the, uh, that number twenty-two fifty is not the minimum. Square footage of a unit. It's the minimum, it's in the zoning, it's, uh. Just refer to it. It's the gross floor area per dwelling unit in the zoning ordinance.
And you are using the gross, uh, floor unit as how much in your, in your calculations for your building?
Uh, one thousand five hundred and five.
So it's, it's, that's a thousand square feet less.
Correct.
Okay. I'll be back with more questions as things develop. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Hi, this is Edward Pimental. I, I don't. Look, let me, let me offer something up and purely from a land use perspective. I don't want to speak from a fiscal perspective. We in planning circles have come to learn. That density on pure sheer numbers is not the accurate way to review these things. Because larger units can accommodate greater number of bedrooms and what we've learned is. The larger the unit clearly requires more infrastructure. The larger the unit requires more parking. It typically will generate more children and more fiscal impact. There's a demand, there's a greater demand for smaller units. I've now been involved. In the last two to three years. Both municipally, because I am a municipal planner as well. And as a consultant and probably well over a thousand units. The standard unit that I've been involved in is smaller in size. Are smaller in bedroom count because that's where, and by the way, that's where most of the regulations go. For example, the town of North Kingston doesn't base density anymore on unit count. They base it on the quantity of bedrooms. And that's for both, for the infrastructure as well as they packed in the environmentals. You're putting in septic systems, wells, that type of thing. So everybody's understanding now that it's not based on sheer count of units. That's become a kind, that's kind of an urban myth now. So, and here we have an existing. Lodge structure too that can accommodate X amount of square footage. So greater number of units and smaller units is actually requires less infrastructure. And is more appropriate. And it will generate, typically it will generate less people, less impact and that's just a reality. I can also add this to the record. We've just approved. Probably several hundred units in the city of East Providence. The majority of the units were already leased out or rented out before the project was even developed. And on average, we're talking, these were single individuals. So you've got a large group of people who are downsizing. And want these lot, and these smaller units, and it's, it's the number one, it's the number one thing in the market is one and two bedroom units. And the number of children that are coming out of these. Facilities is, is, is staggering how little they, they are. So what happens is. We have to put a number to these, these developments, but in the end result, we're being very conservative because that's not what's being realized. We've actually lost children in the state of Rhode Island. We're actually looking at a lot of schools and submit, in cities and towns to try to figure out how to bring people in. To fill in the school systems. I'm not saying that's what we want to do in Bristol. I'm just saying that's the reality. So I wanted to put a face to the land use component to this. Because that is what's happening in Rhode Island. Uh, uh, and I've been personally involved in, like I said, at least approval of a thousand units if not more. And they are not impacting the communities the way communities typically were concerned about. So I just wanted to put that on the record.
Well, my, my reality is, but is the area between church and constitution and hope and themes and, uh. It seems to me that it's, it's. Hard to, hard to uh, come to terms with the generalities about comparing us to East Providence. Uh, larger units, uh, require more parking spaces. I can't imagine that ninety-eight larger units are going to require more parking spaces than a hundred and fifty-one smaller units. And the, the numbers obviously don't work that way. You're gonna get, you're gonna get, you're gonna get two cars per unit, no matter how many you have. So if you have twice as, about seventy percent more units. You're gonna get seventy percent more cars. These are just, these are just. Figures that don't mean anything within our, the context of what we're dealing with tonight. We're gonna have more cars because we get more units. If you have a, if you have. Two people in, in, in a year, you're gonna have two cars, whether it's nine hundred square feet or it's two thousand square feet. So if you have a hundred and fifty-one. Nine hundred square feet units, you're gonna have three hundred cars. If you have ninety-eight, two thousand square foot units, you're gonna have two hundred cars. So I mean, I don't understand.
So I can only tell you that's not the case. So that, that's not the case. And, and I'm not comparing East Province to Bristol. I'm talking about if you go across the spectrum and take into consideration whether it's an urban. I'm talking about if you go across the spectrum and take into consideration whether it's an urban market, a suburban market or rural market. Smaller units do not require the same amount of parking space as does a larger unit. That's just not the reality. That, that there are, there are statistical numbers out there, how some communities have shown larger. Developments with much more dense units have required a fraction of what the regulations are. That's why across the urban spectrum. Within planning circles, they're saying we're trying, we're generating too much parking demand and we end up with a sea of asphalt. And large stalls that remain, you know, underutilized.
Urban areas you're talking about?
I'm talking across the spectrum, whether it be rural, suburban or, 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 or urban.
Urban or suburban, urban or suburban or rural. We have an urban area that has, has public transportation. You go rural or suburban like we are, there is no public transportation. So everybody needs a car. You can't compare urban and rural. You can't compare urban and suburban.
But that's why these labels are sampled across all the spectrum. A, a smaller unit does not generate as much parking as a larger unit. That's just the reality. And there's, there's plenty of data out there to support that.
Yeah, well, there's, there's five of us tonight. I can't take up any more time in good conscience. I'll be back. Thank you.
Sean, when you do the parking study, I assume that will take into account the projected number of cars for the project?
The, the traffic study will look at the amount of trips per day. And the peak trips. During, during peak hours, you know, morning and evening.
Okay, thanks. Diane, I think Mr. Millard is finished with questions. We have the next.
I think so also. Thank you. So the next board member, Tony Mergo.
Oh, hi. I have a question for Joe. Joe, the two hundred and twelve thousand four hundred and fifty-seven in property tax revenue. Did that include the sewer use fees? I, I believe they're about five hundred dollars a unit. So that would, that's about seventy-five thousand dollars.
No, it did not. This is just property tax.
Okay, so. So you could add another, pretty much add another seventy-five thousand to that number.
Sewer water fees would certainly be added on top of it, yes.
Yeah. Okay, and then I, I have another question about the, right now there's Prudence Island people that lease. Spaces in the, in that main parking lot across the street. So we're, we're going to end up losing that. I'm taking it. So I'm wondering kind of what we're going to do as a town. To make up for that loss of parking for the Prudence Island people. And I was wondering, even though you're not showing it on the plan, what, what your attention is for the lot on the corner of the parking lot. On the corner of church and Fame Street. And I'll come right out and say it. Would, would you possibly be willing to donate that lot to the town? For, that we could use for parking?
I can't speak to that particularly tonight, Mr. Mergo, because for one thing, Chris Reynolds from Brady Sullivan is not here. So he could not weigh in, but I made a note of your question.
Okay, and then as far as the affordable housing condition. I believe you're responsible for fifteen units or fifteen payments in lieu of. And i- is it possible that you could, some of the, the two properties that you own across the street, the residential properties? If those might qualify as affordable housing? Because you have one, two family and you have a single family. So that would be three units right there.
You're talking about the ones on Fame Street lots forty-nine and fifty?
Yeah. I'm not, I'm not sure of the lot numbers, but.
Yeah, I think the.
You know, if those could qualify, I mean, they're already there existing, you know. That would be a much better deal for the town. And then also, I'm also in favor of allowing only pedestrian traffic from that opening on Hope Street. Because I, I mean, I went by there the other day and it's, it's pretty narrow. So I, I think that were.
That did come up at TRC and Sean, I think you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that did come up and I think the developers, the applicants are amenable to that.
Yeah, I believe you said that earlier.
Yeah. Yeah, that's not a problem.
I know there's been talk and I'm sure people from the public are going to ask too about the hundred and fifty units that you want and. Just as an idea, throwing an idea out there, if we could. Possibly meet you halfway and do something like a hundred and twenty-five units and then maybe add a little bit more commercial space.
Yeah, as far as the commercial, I know my own experience with, with Brady Sullivan and Torsten Mill, they had. I think it was my recollection was about ninety-eight thousand square feet of commercial space. It was in the original approvals. And they just found that the man was not there for those, that commercial space, even getting professional offices and things like that. So. We had to go back to the town of Warren two times to reduce especially use permits and variances to reduce the amount of commercial space. Because there was more demand for residential, not so much for commercial and I think, and. Either Ed or Sean can weigh in if I'm straying afar here, but I think it's going to be a similar situation here. And I think that's why the request was for only sixty-three hundred of commercial space because. Now the demand is not so much for commercial space here, particularly again, this is on Game Street. It's not even on Hope Street. So it's off the main drag. Sean might recommend that.
That's well, with the new Marina going in and stuff, I was thinking something like a West Marine or like Marine Supply. Or some, some kind of retail like that might be a good fit for that, for that area.
I know they've generally been focused on, on low impact professional offices, that kind of thing. So. Yeah, do you want to pin on that from a land use perspective?
Well, yeah, so when, in, in all these downtown areas where we're trying to create the true mixed use development. So we're trying to feed into a good commercial tax base. What has been lacking was the presence of residents, right? So if we feed in greater number of residents, then it helps to thrive more the commercial component. I mean, Andre Dwanis back as, back in the nineteen, nineteen nineties with Seaside in Florida. Mentioned this, that when he went to downtowns and helped to thrive and generate more of a residential presence. Then eventually the commercial component took off. So I think that's what would probably would be the premier. Or the most important component of this facility would be to generate as many residents to try to feed into them to down, the downtown, to downtown core. Where, you know, then you can start to generate, hopefully generate more commercial and then usage of that commercial and then you have the secondary benefits. So it, it's, it's always a difficult thing. I know we, we, we love to, when we do talk about mixed use, we talk always about the first floor, hopefully feeding commercial into that. But I think until the residential presence is there, that it's a very difficult thing to accomplish and we need more of that presence. So I think that's what would be the benefit of this, of, of the reuse of this facility for, for my professional land use perspective.
Okay, thank you gentlemen. That's, that's all I have for questions for now. Thank you, Mr. Mergo. Thank you.
John, I wanted to add just one point about the, for you to count again and because this is something that Mr. Reynolds from Brady Sullivan brought up at the TRC meeting. Mr. Reynolds was the project manager for the development of Stone Harbor. And, you know, even given the time that he was managing that project, the demand for that. Unit type was different than the demand for the unit types that are being proposed in this project, which we all recognize as a massive building. And, and just to renovate in accordance with historic district requirements. Deal with flood hazard construction. I mean, this, this building needs a complete gut and renovation to comply with all building code requirements. So it is a significant investment and, and I think what he tried to convey too is. As I mentioned earlier briefly. And it's probably something that we're going to have to expand upon once Mr. Reynolds is back in good health. Is that not only just filling up the building to provide it a usable, using it. To its full potential, I would say. It's in, in where we are today versus where we are when Stone Harbor was built is, it's a different market. And when this project was approved for master plan in two thousand and eight, we all know that the recession that happened afterwards. Was the primary driver for this project going on the shelf for the past fourteen years or so. So it's not, it's not that the developer is looking simply at generating profit. Every developer and any business person, anybody goes to work every day, look, is looking to make money and make profit. But the driver really is trying to reuse all of this facility. Appropriately, and they've done many of these projects and, and, you know, we've talked about the Torsten Mill. A couple of times and as a reference and a benchmark. They feel like they're proposing something that is reasonable and, and, and to Mr. Pimental's statements about the, the number of units in and of itself. Is actually appropriate for this size facility. It's whether, as a TRC stated, as whether the infrastructure can support it. And, you know, one of the things that is, again, on the side of, of not only the potential future residents. But the town itself is that it has such good infrastructure available with the bus. The bus stops nearby and, and biking and walking and yes, residents still need cars. It was, that was understood clearly. But the, the applicant's position is that the, the density as proposed is actually appropriate for this, for this, this size building.
Hey Sean. You're muted Diane.
Thank you, John. Are you all set, Tony?
Yes, I am Diane.
Okay, good. So the next. I guess we'll do the alternate board members to run or do you want to, do you want to go next? Let the alternates ask. Brian Clark.
Hello, everybody. I've heard a couple of questions. Regarding a couple of, on the parking. You had mentioned the, the zoning relief that you're looking for. And it was from a standard space of ten to nine, correct? That it was Sean?
Yes, that's correct. Yes.
Without a space in between the spaces, without the double line?
Correct.
Okay, so if you could look at. Page A zero dash one on your plans here, and this would be the internal parking. For the, on that ground level parking garage. Am I looking at the widths of these as seven point six square, seven point six feet wide? Is that where that, that seven point six is coming in? You're muted Sean.
I'm sorry, Mr. Clark. I, I was going to share the screen with, with the public and the rest of the board so they could look at it. Sheet A zero five, you said? A zero one.
A zero one.
Yeah, okay. I'll just share my screen quickly. This is the, this is the sheet that I did not show and this is the ground floor that shows the, the parking spaces and the layout. And. To the, not only the points you are making. The interior parking. Does not comply with the standards I had mentioned before for exterior parking. Yes.
So are you looking for zone relief in, in that as well?
Yeah, the seven point six is an elevation, a floor elevation.
What are the widths of those spaces?
Let's see here. They're nine feet by eighteen feet. Those dimensions are shown over here.
Okay.
There, you can see some of the other, this is like an area back here that the peer reviewer were saying. This is kind of a tight space. The widths here are only nineteen feet in, in this one area. Is this adequate to, to turn around? There's, it only accommodates a few parking spaces, but the question is well taken. It might be similar to something you would have in your own personal garage, seeing there's only a few spaces there, but they asked the applicant to. Respond to the concern whether maneuverability is possible. Now the town allows some compact spaces which you can go down to, I'm going to go for my memory.
I don't want to, I don't want to get into a whole, I mean.
Okay, yeah, but there are some compact spaces, Mr. Clark, as well. Those are identified over here and those tend, tend to be eight feet by sixteen or so. And designated for compact spaces.
Okay, if those were not, though, all of these spaces that are below standards, were they referenced in that list of zoning? Relief that you read off earlier in the evening?
Yeah, yes, the, the town permits. The town permits compact spaces and its ordinance as well.
Okay. Okay, so that's, you know, I mean, this has always been an issue with developments in town and parking requirements that. We, we as a board have issues with tandem parking. Has always been a, you know, we just went through this recently with another development down the street at the corner of State and Thames where they had. It was just, it was a parking mess. It, it wasn't a parking lot. So I'm not saying this is the way it is, but it does kind of reflect back to. Mr. Millard's comments about you have the room, so we're still trying to understand why you want this density of parking. Okay. And. There are a couple of the questions. You had mentioned the stormwater runoff. So when you're, that's not going into the combined system. To be a burden to the sewer system, but is that going to be, is that just running into the harbor? Is that going to be run onto onsite retention and then?
Yes.
Pushed out later?
Yep, let me, I'm going to highlight those areas, but. We're planning on two subsurface treatment systems. I'm just highlighting for you and other viewers. Right there and what will happen is the water will be collected from the parking lots. Now right today, all the water just runs off into Fame Street. And then finds its way down in the harbor. Some of it goes down to Constitution Street. It will be collected, it'll be filtered and then it will be sent into a brand new drainage system. There, there is none that exists today, but yeah, and it has to comply with the C and D and requirements.
That's what I had figured. I just wanted to double check that.
Okay.
And, you know, I, I'm having a tough time with the, with the density requirements that this development is asking for. I know that. The gentleman that spoke earlier was mentioning a lot about kind of standards now and what the smaller and less parking and. You know, the more units to generate less cars. I've lived in Bristol for just about thirty years now and, you know. There's a traffic jam pretty much from two forty-five in the afternoon until six o'clock at night. There's two roads coming in and out of here and. You know, so every car that you add, every unit that you add. Goes against that, you know what I mean? So we do have significant problems there. And then my last question or my, double check my notes here. On your financial impact study, you had referenced. Comparable apartment complexes of school age children. And you have Cranston, Warwick, North Providence, Narragansett, West Warwick. But you don't have the Torster, which is right next door. So do you have the number of school age children in that? Building, like an accurate number, not just an estimated number?
Do you want me to answer that?
Yeah, go ahead, George. Just going to see if you could answer that.
Yeah, it's on, it's on appendix G, the very last page of the report, Mr. Clark. That's the actual count from September twenty twenty-one. You see it?
So you have two hundred and twenty units?
Right, says twenty-eight, yeah, twenty-eight children residing in the two hundred and twenty units, right?
Twenty-eight, okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Sure.
At there, because they just wasn't on that chart and I was wondering why. And then the other. The, the, the question you had Joe on the. The numbers that were like to the detriment for the town, for the school. Kids was based on after us getting our state aid for. And then it was, you know, not including if we ever lost that state aid, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. 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 You guys sent us so much information here. I'm just trying to get to it all. In the in the you got the only other traffic study that was completed was in two thousand and eight. You have not updated that, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so there has not been a the the traffic impact done since two thousand and eight.
That's right.
Okay, alright. Well, that's a pretty old Traffic study at this point, so.
Yes.
I don't, yeah, I don't have any any more questions at this point, but I'd like to thank you both. I thank you all. And we we want to see something happen here. We just got to be Very careful because we're gonna own this and this is gonna be in our town forever, and we just gotta make sure it's Makes sense for everybody. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Clark.
Hey, Richard Rodiero, do you have any questions?
Very, very briefly. Can you hear me Diane?
There's a terrible reverberation, Richard. I'm just gonna see if I need to mute.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, better. Thank you.
Okay, Diane, very, very briefly, and it's really touching upon what a number of the board members said. To be quite honest with you, when the council voted unanimously to Keep the absolute number in this project at ninety-eight in two thousand and eight, I thought That was many, much too many units. I thought it was too big for Bristol in two thousand and eight at ninety-eight. Now, we're looking at The one in two thousand and twenty-two, and the thing that concerns me the most is that I would believe that in two thousand and eight, the town was smaller Than it is now in two thousand and twenty-two, but yet the developers coming before us Asking for fifty-three more units. And I'm gonna end this way. I don't know how you go about Changing A unanimous vote of a council from two thousand and eight. And I just like to remind everyone when Stone Harbor came before the council Somewhere around two thousand and three and four, and the project ended in two thousand and six, that project only Units. This project here is almost doubled. And I just don't think the town of Bristol can handle The large a development. And to the gentleman that talks about nine hundred square feet or two thousand square feet. If you put two bedrooms in nine hundred square feet, or you put two bedrooms in two thousand square feet. You can only put so many people in each of those bedrooms. So I I think that argument doesn't really make much sense to me. So as I said again, I was against ninety-eight units in two thousand and eight, and even though I don't have a vote, I want to at least voice my opposition To them trying to increase this now to a hundred and fifty-one. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Jerome Squatrito. Oh, Jerome, we can't hear you. You have to unmute. Hit the microphone button at the bottom left of your screen to unmute. You don't see it? It's a little, it's a little button way over on the left. You have to click it with your mouse. It should show up on the bottom of your screen.
Diane, the buttons on some screens are on the top.
Okay, Jerome. I stand corrected. Your button may be at the top. Do you see it at the top? You have to click it with the mouse. We'll get Mrs. Squatrito to the rescue. That's awesome. Thank you.
Alrighty.
Thank you.
I always get in trouble. My question is, is number one, I don't, maybe they do know. I was the chairman in two oh eight. When this all came up in front of us. I've been doing this thing for the past fourteen years. It seems number one, when there was the ninety-eight units. The parking places he had to use the parking lot across the street For the people. Now They want a hundred and fifty-one units, and they say they got enough parking place in the place. To me, it doesn't, it doesn't function right. I don't know. That's number one. Number two is About the lower affordable housing. Barbosa and Perella came out with the ten percent. Now That why they went with the ten percent is that's what the government Rhode Island wants it, ten percent. Now, in the day and age, Rhode Island is looking for twenty-five percent. Are you hearing me Diane?
I am.
Alright, twenty-five percent, but they're still looking for ten percent. So now I'll come up with a figure. Ten percent came out with. Is it still forty, a four, forty to four?
Yeah, it's forty thousand per unit. Is that what you're?
Forty-five per unit, right?
It's still forty. So back when the zone change was originally granted. Right. Was a different, there was a different way to calculate the fee in lieu of. And that has been Changed by the state. They now give the towns the number, so there's no longer a A calculation. It's it's the number that we're given by Rhode Island Housing, which in Bristol instances.
So it's twenty-five percent, right?
Well, that's a different, okay, so that is the The goal for the state is still that we get to ten percent, but our zoning ordinance it for the inclusionary zoning. It's twenty percent, and for the comprehensive permit, it's twenty-five percent. So we're looking for a little bit more in 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 certain types of developments, and I think to answer your question back when the zone change was approved and The condition was, I think, a minimum of ten percent up to twenty percent. The ten percent minimum was because we didn't want to fall behind in our unit count for affordable units. So if you give us at least the ten percent. It will be a, you know, we'll, we won't go backwards. So that's why the ten percent was the lower number in that condition.
What I'm what I'm suggesting. I'll stay with the ten percent. But I'm looking for twenty-five percent of the buildings. So that comes out with like The price for ten percent, they have to give us Eighty-four thousand dollars. And eighty-four thousand dollars, I think you could build just garages, no housing. With the new thing that I progress is that if they go with the twenty-five percent On the ten, it'll come all thirty-seven, it'll be thirty-seven house projects. Now multiply that to the right price In the figure would be nine hundred thousand dollars. So are they willing to pay the nine hundred? Or are they gonna give us thirty-seventh Residents?
So the offer in the application is a fee in lieu of for the required affordable housing units. So by my calculations, you would round it up, ten percent rounded up would be sixteen required. Times forty. Forty, forty thousand.
Forty thousand comes up with roughly eighty thousand dollars.
Now, it's six hundred and forty thousand dollars Total, sixteen units required times forty thousand dollars per unit.
Yeah. Times sixty or forty, it's still, how many buildings could you build with that? One?
I would, if you're lucky.
So now I prove, I I figure if they want that ten percent, they'll get the ten percent. But you judge it on the thirty-seven apartments that they supposed to give you Times The money times forty.
Oh, so you're saying the proposal, your your suggestion is the fee in lieu of, but based on a requirement of twenty percent of the units being afforded.
Right. That's my suggest. I'd like the project, but they gotta bend when we bend. Right now, they're looking for everything and don't want to give nothing. Like the parking lots. Before in the past, the parking lots went with the building. Now they don't go with the building. And you know, you you want something, you better give something. You can't take the whole pie. We're gonna have a slice of it. That's all I have to say.
Okay. So I I think Jerome, we've gone through all the board members and the alternate board members, and I think if It would be appropriate to open it up. This is a public informational meeting. It is almost It's about nine o'clock. I don't know. Do you want to take a short break before you have public comment, or you want to just go right into the?
Well, why don't we go to in the ten o'clock, we shut it off. Too late?
Not, it's up to you.
Well, it's, how's the board sound?
That's fine with me. I'm retired. I'll sleep tomorrow.
So that and that would be Jerome, that would be with the understanding that you would then continue this to your February meeting To resume the public, public informational meeting. So you will close the hearing. Okay. So if you're ready then, I don't know, did you want to take a short break before or just go right into it and just?
I'm okay with it.
Okay.
I'm gonna make a motion to open the public hearing.
Okay, so Tony made a motion to open the public hearing.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Aye.
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 Who seconded that? I'm sorry, I didn't get the second.
I did Diane.
Oh, Steve Katz. Okay, great. Steve Katz seconded. So um
Can we just go, because we got it very confusing with all these Little boxes. Could we just do a roll call vote on that, please, quickly?
Still a roll call vote to open the public hearing, Armin Baladi.
Aye.
Stephen Katz.
Aye.
Chuck Millard.
Aye.
Tony Mergo.
Aye.
Jerome Squatrito.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. So um what I would like to suggest is that people just raise their hands. If you're on your phone To raise the hand, it is star nine to raise your hand. And to unmute yourself, if you're on the phone, it is star six. And I'm just gonna go down the list. There's been a few hands raised already. I'll just start at the top And call your name, and then you can unmute yourself and and speak. So the first hand raised is Michael Souza.
Hi, everyone. My name is Michael Souza. I live at two forty-nine Hope Street. Well, within the setback, should let everyone know that I'm a former vice president, office manager for Fosse O'Neill. And I was in that capacity during two thousand and eight When this first came up, and then I hired Sean Martin, great guy. And I appreciate all the work he's always done. I also, I see the mill from my deck. My deck is the So my property, if you were to lose your brakes heading south on Fame Street, you'd end up in my backyard. And I have the deck that's up up high, and I see the whole mill complex. Just a couple of points. So I am a registered professional engineer in the state of Rhode Island. As I said, I represented Stone Harbor back in the day, and have done quite a bit of development work as an engineer in the in the town. You know, I just want to just thank several members of the board, Mr. Katz, Mr. Millard. You're you're spot on. Mr. Squatrito, really appreciate that as well. Mr. Millard, you're absolutely right about the parking. You know, when developers hire consultants, they hire them to say what they need them to say. And I own four apartments downtown Bristol, all the one and two bedroom. They they may only occupy one bedroom, but there's usually a couple, and guess what? They want two cars. So the more units, the more cars. And Mr. Clark, you're absolutely right. The traffic downtown can't get any worse. As far as The the commercial aspect, you know, the comment where, you know, create the residential demand for more commercial. We have plenty of residential demand Downtown Bristol, and as far as the secondary income. Try to go to any restaurant or any place downtown along the waterfront In three seasons of the year, and it's packed. Okay, the secondary income is gonna be non-existent, you know, so My my comments have to do with the developer asking for quite a bit of relief here. The increase in number of units, the the negative revenue that we're gonna be seeing from this. And I think what there needs to be, and and I also want to see this development. I grew up in town. I'm a third generation here in Bristol. I love to see that development get done, but the right way, as everyone else has said. And I think we need a fair development. With Stone Harbor, we got, the town had a fair development at the end. But there was a lot of back and forth, and I'm really imploring The the planning board, I'm gonna ask the same with the town council, and ask the same with the zoning board. That we don't let this one get by us either. It's gonna be another staple in this town beyond my life. So a couple of things. So they're asking for a lot of relief. There needs to be some exchange here. There needs to be some fairness, I think. Asking for that parking lot, Mr. Mergo, great idea. Why is that thing been blocked off for years? Nobody can use it. It's a great parking lot there, right downtown. Gee, what about letting us giving it to the town? You can't, you don't want it. You don't want to use it, so give it to us. Listen, the reason for three hundred and eleven parking spaces, when you only need a hundred and sixty-two. And Mr. Mergo, you actually brought it up. They he leases these spaces out to Residents of Hog Island, Prudence Island, people who take the ferry every day. I walk my dog there every day. I see them all come out, jump in their cars, go to work, come back at at night. And he's gonna continue with that source of revenue. They want all these spaces because he's gonna continue with that component, and I don't think there's anything wrong with that. Those people need a place to keep their cars. I'll bet you, though, with the paved area, he's gonna charge a lot more, but that that's up to him. That's a private Agreement. I I do have a few ideas in terms of not only the parking lot But other ways that it could be some fair relief. Sean was correct, and and he has, he referred to the Stormwater systems within the parking lot, as he said, it would be filtered water. Well, they're infiltration basins, meaning that the water is gonna go enter, it's gonna be filtered, infiltrated into the ground. I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, Sean, that the pipe you have coming out of there is an overflow. So yes, that's treating the stormwater from the parking lot, but we're not getting a benefit, the town of Bristol, from that treatment. He's just needing a permit requirement. What would give the town of Bristol a benefit Is perhaps capturing, instead of running the pipe down the middle of Fame Street. Not collecting any of the water on Fame Street and treating that, what about putting in catch basins and And collecting the water on Fame Street and then treating it before it enters a harbor? You know, I live on the harbor. I I dock there, I boat on the harbor, and it's gotten, it's gotten degraded over the years, and we need to protect it and we need to enhance it. So enhancing that stormwater quality would be wonderful. Okay, there's an opportunity here to do it. Another benefit is, you know, when you have public access and you have term terminates on each end of the property And no one has any ability to access it, then what good is the public access? It ends on one side, ends on the other. Look, you know, maybe the developer needs to go out of their way. Maybe they need to work out deals on both ends of that public access, so the public can actually access it and use it. We did that with Stone Harbor. Look how great that, people love that along there, and we have it now all the way connected Down to here, why not connect it the rest of the way? That's the way it was always sold to me That it was gonna end up, when this property was developed, the public would be able to That's the way it was always sold to me, that it was gonna end up, when this property was developed, the public would be able to access that. And I, I think, you know, I, I don't want to take everyone, I know there's a lot of people who want to talk, but there's a lot of ways that the relief and the negative revenue impacts and traffic impacts, there's going to be a lot more cars with this development, don't let anyone kid you that with, you know, reduced square footage and smaller apartment, no. Each apartment is gonna generate at least one, most likely two vehicles. So, we, and as Mr. Clark pointed out, I live downtown, I live on Hope Street. The traffic here is horrendous, and the sun, we all know it, right? So, and, and as far as mitigation, how do you mitigate that? How are you gonna mitigate, you only get fit so many cars on Hope Street downtown and on Fame Street? So, I really encourage, um, to hold our, hold your guns here and make this a really good development for the town of Bristol, thank you.
Next person, I'm gonna, Mike, I'm gonna, oh, you've lowered your hand, thank you, so the next person to speak is Caroline.
Ah, thank you very much, thank you for this opportunity, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thanks for the opportunity to provide some comments, I'd like to begin by placing the Bristol Yarn Mill proposal in a?
First, excuse me, first, can you give your name, your full name and address for the record, please?
Thank you, I should have done that, Caroline Jacobus, J A C O B U S, thirty-five Church Street in Bristol. Um, I'd like to place this proposal in a context in a way that I hope will help Bristol's decision makers to maintain their commitment to the laws and community goals that have been set forth in our municipal code and comprehensive plan. When the Friends of Historic Bristol brought Donovan Ripkema to Bristol in February of two thousand nineteen, as part of our ongoing economic revitalization program, he was taken on a tour of the community, and as he went past the Robin Rugg facility, he said, "This is probably the biggest development opportunity on the east coast of the United States." And this is a man who is nationally known as an expert in economic redevelopment, particularly of historic sites. So, um, I would like to urge all of the decision makers on the Historic District Commission, the Planning Board, the Zoning Board, and the Council to keep in mind these comments by Donovan Ripkema, um, and not to feel that they have to weaken the standards that our community has set in its, uh, municipal code and its, and its comprehensive plan. These developers, I believe, are not going to walk away from the enormous profits that are represented by the generous government subsidies available to them for these properties. And if they should decline to move forward, uh, in the face of Bristol's determination to stand by its laws, then I am sure that this highly attractive development opportunity will be snapped up by someone else. I am concerned about the, the degree to which Brady Sullivan Properties is asking Bristol to breach its existing ordinances. These ordinances were put in place by the town because they represent what the town leaders feel are the minimum standards for redeveloping our historic heritage. Whether the issue is requesting a zoning change to get a more profitable designation, or vastly increasing the residential density, or meeting our current affordable housing requirements, or our current twenty-five percent requirement for commercial or institutional or public use space, or dealing with the traffic congestion that three hundred and eleven new cars in one block in the downtown is gonna cause. The data that the developers provide in their proposal falls significantly short in describing the impact that it will have on Bristol culturally and fiscally, functionally, aesthetically. I'd like to focus very quickly tonight only on one area, and that is affordable housing. Affordable housing is a huge and growing problem, not only in Bristol, but throughout Rhode Island. When the nineteen ninety-one Low and Moderate Income Housing Act was passed, it called for ten percent of housing supply in Rhode Island municipalities to be classified as affordable. As of June twenty twenty-one, only six of the thirty-nine communities that fall under this law had met their ten percent affordable threshold. Bristol was not one of these communities. Our current affordable housing supply falls into the five to ten percent range. And the head of the United Way of Rhode Island, Courtney Nicolado, says that economists, this is a quote, "Economists here in the state of Rhode Island have shown that we are tens of thousands of housing units short." I think that the last number I saw, this is Nicolado speaking, was about twenty-five thousand units short of safe and affordable housing here in the state. In Rhode Island, the median price for a single-family house is nearing four hundred thousand. Too many people are born and raised in Bristol and cannot afford to raise their own families here because of the lack of affordable housing. They are simply priced out of the market. In good faith, I must state that I have a special commitment to affordable housing and a special understanding of some of the issues that are surrounding affordable housing, because I worked from the Morris County Habitat for Humanity for many years in New Jersey. I have seen the rigorous screening process that is used to select responsible families who will be partners in the affordable housing venture. I have seen the life-changing impact of stable and affordable housing on the health aspirations and achievements of families who would otherwise struggle year after year. I have seen the growth of communities who, through a commitment to providing affordable housing, have enabled those who were born and raised in a town to be able to stay in that town to raise their own families. And I have seen families who come into a town where they did not live before, who have contributed their energy and their hard work to strengthening that community. In contrast to the commitment to affordable housing that Bristol has enacted into its codes, the developers of the current Bristol Yarn Mill proposal are seeking to totally opt out of their affordable housing commitment. On page two of the attachment to the application for zoning map change and modification, at the end of a lengthy discussion of parking the new shy, there is a sentence dropped in that states, quote, "In addition, pursuant to condition two of the decision relating to the two thousand and eight council approval, the applicant will be making a fee in lieu payment to the Bristol Affordable Housing Trust Fund based upon ten percent of the approved units," unquote. I don't understand why these developers are not being held to the current affordable housing codes in Bristol, which require twenty percent of units be affordable housing, and which definitely state that there's no longer an option for a payment in lieu. Let's not break my discussion at the moment to have them answer that question, but perhaps they can answer it at some point. The Fussin' O'Neill proposal cover letter that's prepared for Brady and Sullivan Properties does not include a request for variance to section twenty-eight, three seventy, inclusionary zoning, which requires the twenty percent of affordable housing. Also, the report that's submitted by Pimental Consulting stretches the credibility on a number of issues when it asserts that their proposal conforms to Bristol's comprehensive plan regarding commercial space, parking, traffic, density, and affordable housing. To state, as both Fussin' O'Neill and Pimental Consulting do, that their proposal is in compliance with Bristol's ordinance because they are asking Bristol to significantly change their ordinances and also resume the properties involved is at the least disingenuous. As to affordable housing, and I'm almost finished, the Pimental report, and more fully, the JDL Enterprises Fiscal Impact Study alludes several times to the preponderance of studio one and two-bedroom units, and that this would discourage family rentals and consequently limit the presence of children in the complex. Whether you are talking about affordable or market-rate housing, I would advocate for the configuration of fewer studio, fewer one, and fewer two-bedroom units, and instead, the creation of more three-bedroom units, specifically so that families will be attracted to the complex. Bristol is fast becoming a town where only seniors can afford to live, where the population of schoolchildren is steadily decreasing, where the children who grew up in Bristol can no longer afford to rent or buy a home and raise their families. We need to reverse these trends if we want to have a healthy, growing, economically viable community. Pimental's position regarding affordable housing, that they are only prepared to recognize ten percent of units be devoted to affordable housing, and that this obligation will be handled through a payment in lieu, is no longer the law in Bristol. We should welcome the opportunity to have the maximum number of families renting in affordably priced units at the Bristol Yarn Mill Complex or somewhere else in Bristol in compliance with Bristol's ordinance, thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman?
Ryan?
Yes. Yes, uh, I, I just would like to keep in mind, I, I, I know that, um, the, the woman who just spoke had a lot to say, but we do have a significant public comment here tonight, and we can't have everybody going fifteen, ten, fifteen minutes at a clip, we'll, we'll, we'll never get everybody in. So, I would just suggest that, that you be mindful of that, Mr. Chairman.
Right, I, we should have, uh, three minutes. You can speak for three minutes.
Okay, thank you, Caroline. The next, uh, hand raised is Abigail Demopolis.
Don't let it be repetitious.
Hi, good evening, um, my name is Abby Demopolis, and my family owns the house at seventeen Constitution Street, which abuts the parking lot property. And so, I will be brief, I have a couple of points and questions to raise. The first one is something Mr. Martin from Fussin' O'Neill alluded to, but really wasn't discussed, which is the question about sea level rise. I'd like to kind of understand what level of sea level rise you're planning for with the building, and over what timeframe? I have regularly looked at the map for sea level rise in downtown Bristol, because our house is pretty close to where it's gonna hit. And that, that area of Fame Street looks like it's quite vulnerable. I attended the walking tour that, um, that I think the town sponsored with, uh, Teresa Crane from URI. I know Diane, that you were on the walking tour, she was discussing in great detail, you know, the flooding possibilities in that area where the high tide line would be like in thirty years, and I didn't totally understand what she was saying, but I got the impression that without intervention, it could kind of be at Fame Street, near Rockwell Park. So, I mean, I think that this is an issue that the town really needs to be practical about. So, my questions would be kind of, what is the developer planning for, over what timeframe? I wouldn't want to see you invest millions of dollars and then have the whole building, you know, be corroded by, by salt water, um, in thirty years. And I think another question we should be asking is, what would the cost to the town be of trying to protect that property from, from sea level rise, obviously, that whole stretch of, of the coast is, is quite vulnerable, but that property right now is vacant um, in terms of, of terms of housing. So, that, that's one set of questions, which I think is, is something we should think about, which has not been discussed. The other set of questions is just related, as everyone might expect, to the parking lot. I think that Mr. Mergo made a good point about, um, what happens to the people who park, um, in that lot, who are using, who go back and forth on the ferry to Prudence Island. If you take that parking away, where, where would they park downtown, they're gonna probably be on the street. And I think another concern that I have in particular, because our property abuts it, is how the parking lot would be configured. Would the, would the spaces be facing the houses, or would the spaces be configured such that they were facing inward? I asked this question because I noticed last week that somebody kind of pulled in to the lot near our house, and their headlights at night were like really quite disturbing. So, if you're gonna have people kind of facing the houses, there needs to be enough fencing and, and foliage and things, so that people are not having headlights blasting into their kitchen every time somebody drives in and out. Those are my questions, thank you for your attention.
Okay. Thank you, Abigail, next is Jessa, uh, Jessalyn Jaris.
Hi, thank you so much, my name is Jessalyn Jaris, I live at one eighty-three High Street here in Bristol. Um, and I'm on the call, because I'm a, I'm a resident, but also I'm a landscape architect, so I'm very curious in all this planning stuff that's going on. I've been practicing for twenty years, and I'd say I have some concerns about some of the elements of the project. One thing I'm really concerned about is that the board seems to be very concerned about these nine-by-eighteen-foot parking spaces, which are standard in the industry, but no one has commented on the twenty-two-foot wide drive aisle, which is narrow. Um, I'm really concerned that people backing in and out of their, their parking spaces are gonna back right into the person behind them with a twenty-foot, twenty-two-foot wide drive aisle, so I really think that should be, uh, looked at a little bit further. I'm concerned about the ten-foot deep buffer planting around the parking, exterior parking lot. I don't think that's gonna provide enough screening for the neighbors, as Abigail just mentioned. Part, you know, headlights in your, in your yard is not really the thing everyone is gonna be happy with when people come in and out over time. And I just hope that the board would ask the developer to provide a robust planting plan for those areas, um, and really think about how that's going to affect the neighbors. I had a whole bunch of things, but I don't want to be, um, take up too much time, I think, I'd be cur, I'm very curious about the bio-retention basin that's planned, it looks tiny compared to anything I've ever designed or seen design. I'd like to make sure that we are more, we have more knowledge on what that does, what that is. Then, I know this is in master plan, but I definitely think that's an area we should look at. The loading zone, I'd like to know more about what the loading zone is in the, in the parking area, that, that loading zone that's down at the first floor level. Couldn't load anything, you could never put a truck in there to, to provide loading, unless that's just a pedestrian or a vehicular loading area, I'd like to know more information on that. And, and lastly, I'm really concerned about what I heard tonight about housing for families. I mean, I just moved here, I have a ten-year-old and a twelve-year-old that attend Bristol Warren Schools. And I'm really concerned that it sounds like the planning department, or the planning board, is trying to stop families from moving to town by not providing adequate housing for them, and that's really disappointing to me, we have a population loss currently, people are leaving this town, and we are not going to be a robust downtown or a robust coastal community without families moving here, and I just want to say that, thank you.
Okay. Next up is Zach Heath.
I thank you so much for, uh, taking the time to hear from the public tonight. You know, I think if some of my questions were answered about this project, but, um, I think I have a couple other questions that I'm, I'll just lay out there and let people answer as they may. Uh, Mr. Martin had talked about, uh, the project in good detail. But I think one of the areas that I was most focused on was the area of Constitution Street. Where the walkway, uh, excuse me, the, the walkway along the waterfront, it looks like that ends at both the northern and southern ends, and I'm curious if that is, you know, truly ended, is there a gate there that allows access at all, or is that somewhere where, uh, you know? truly ended. Is there a gate there that allows access at all, or is that somewhere where, uh, you know, people cannot access that at all? Um, and then I'm also curious about the, uh, the parking entrance at that southern end there. Uh, right now, if you, if you go down to the bottom of Constitution Street, there's a huge, you drive into a hole to be able to go into the um, the garage door that goes into the, the Robin Rugg Building. I'm wondering if that will be raised up to street level, uh, once there's however many cars going in and out of there every single day. Um, sorry, I made a whole bunch of notes, and now I'm trying to zip through them as quickly as possible. Uh, the, the other piece down the bottom of Constitu- Constitution Street there is the, the storm runoff. I know that there's plans for retention ponds and whatnot to hold uh, storm runoff from the parking areas, and, and it sounds like that will be a benefit to what's going into the harbor. Uh, but you know, if you stand down the, the bottom of Constitution Street during the storm, you will see the vast amount of runoff that comes through there, uh, and a lot of, quite frankly, junk that just comes out of the end of that pipe. Um, and so my, my question is whether there's an opportunity to improve what is coming out of that pipe and, uh, make it better for our harbor in general. Uh, in, in general, you know, I, I didn't know a lot about this project when I came into this meeting, but, um, the overall volume of units, uh, certainly seems, uh, concerning to me. Uh, not necessarily from a financial point of view. I think that the um, the short-term analysis on, on what that revenue projection might be is probably something that is quite short-term. Um, then in the long run, it'll be a benefit to the town of Bristol. We all want to see something uh, viable and beautiful built at the Robin Rugg. Um, but I, I quite frankly, don't know who the heck wants to live in a nine hundred square foot apartment, so uh, hopefully the planning board will keep in mind the folks that are going to live in these apartments, the, the folks that are going to live in these condominiums, whatever they might be, and, um, and, and keep in mind what their lifestyle will be like living in nine hundred square feet. Uh, I guess that's all. Thank you very much.
Um, Zach, before you leave, I, I'm sorry, did you give us your address?
No, of course not. I skipped right over that part.
Okay.
Diane, you've done a wonderful job running this meeting, by the way. It's very difficult to run a big meeting on Zoom, and you did an amazing job. My name is Zachary Heath. I live at thirty-three Brooks Farm Drive, Bristol.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And the next speaker is Gwendy McQuilkin.
Um, unfortunately, you're gonna get John, but Gwendy's here also. Um, we live, our name is McQuilkin, John McQuilkin, M C Q U I L I L K I N, and we live at one twenty-six Thane Street. So we live right on the corner of Church and Thames. Two questions or just two comments. Directly from our house is the alley going down to the marina. If there's any ever, any emergency situation in the bay, that alley is filled with, um, fire and police vehicles. And I just want to make sure that, we see it all the time. So when they say they're gonna have an entrance on the north side of the building, I'm often like confused, how does that work? The second point that I want to make, and there's a disclaimer, I'm a professor at Roger Williams University. There's a real difference between American Tourister, that's located in Warren, as well as Stone Harbor, which are million-dollar units. These are gonna be smaller units, and respond to your question, Zach. One of the potential is students. Um, so I just want the planning board, because of the proximity and the lack of housing, dormitory housing at Roger Williams, I've never heard anybody address this, but, um, initially, before we cold renovated our house, we rented it out to Roger's students, and we had major issues. And we're also close to Athens, so on Thursday nights during the regular year, there's a lot of noise. And I just have never, I haven't heard anybody, um, say anything to that regard, and I'm done. Okay, so thank you very much, Diane.
Okay, thank you, John. Um, the next, um, hand raised is Robert and Diane.
Oh, no.
No, they're here. They just have to unmute. Just give them a second, I think.
Sorry.
There you are, yeah.
My name is Robert Holt. I have, uh, I live at twelve and have a property on ten Constitution Street. I've lived there for forty-five years, a fourth generation. I have a couple of quick questions. One was already, my concern is that garage door near the Elks is gonna go up and down how many times a day, and how much traffic is gonna be on Constitution Street, number one. This is to Sean. Do you know what they're gonna charge extra for parking in the garage? For monthly charge?
No, I don't know. Excuse me, um, what, what, what we've been doing here is what we're gonna keep doing, which is collect all the questions.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
And then they'll respond afterwards, rather than do it in between.
Okay, I'm sorry. So there's income coming in from that. I don't know if that's applied to the rent or a separate income. The other thing is, the Elks has fundraisers. I've been a member forty-five years. I don't know where they're gonna park those cars when they have a fundraiser. They're a good cause. They've been in the community a long time. I believe that we can all work with all these parking lots sometime, can help out. Um, one guy brought up, uh, I, I've also been a fireman over forty years for the town, and I've worked for the town thirty years. And I used to be sent out on flood conditions. They say, Bob, go check out such and such, it's flooded. And I used to get a kick out. They said, you better get your boots and rain gear. All I had to do was check the pipes where they are, and if it's high tide, the water doesn't move. So a lot of this is gonna be flooded if we have high tide and certain things. Next to the Coast Guard, there's a house that's next to the Coast Guard that I've seen in forty-five years lose the water, go through the whole basement up to the first floor, and the Coast Guard had to help them pump out. So in my forty-five years, I've seen it twice, won, lost everything. So I'm concerned with the water in the mill and all that, like everybody else. The other thing is, I have a, two family at ten that has no, or has no, uh, driveway, have to park off-street. I have a, a man that's going with me on the street, and with me fifteen years, another ten at ten, and he's asking me, Bob, what do I have to do? I said, well, you might be forced to go get a handicap spot, which I don't like all handicap spots, but or maybe the town could sit a pass for people that live and park on Thames and Constitution that would give them a, a parking spot.
Well, that's why the extra parking spots that they're recommending, I think, are a good thing for the people of the neighborhood, who have people who, you know, they're guests, they're people who um, and like our tenants have no place to park, except the street.
I, I'm just concerned about the people that have been here so long, and the other thing, I don't know, like everything else in Bristol, Thames and Constitution, I can tell you, everybody lives on the street. I can tell you, everybody watches my house. I watch their house. So Russell was always, I never had problems with Russell. He was a good tenant. Now I'm gonna be forced with a new tenant, and who's gonna be the project manager for the town to answer any questions when this development gets going? And I thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Um, so the next speaker hand raised is Catherine Zip.
Hi, everybody. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. Um, my name is Catherine Zip, and I live at thirty-two Graylock Road in Bristol. Um, I share many of the same concerns that everybody else has spoken about, particularly regarding the density of the development, the size of the apartments. And I share many other beliefs, uh, that have been expressed, that I, I just simply don't believe there's a market out there for units that are that small among retirees. Uh, I moved, um, three sets of parents now and an aunt into apartments that were two bedrooms at a minimum, and they were much more comfortable than three. So I really respectfully, um, suggest that the planning board really very carefully consider the size of these units, but I particularly wanted to reiterate and, uh, um, reinforce what Abby and Bob just said about climate change. Climate change is coming to Bristol whether we like it or not, and Thames Street is particularly vulnerable. I have complete confidence that this building, um, as the, is proposed, this development as it proposed, will resist the climate change just fine, but Thames Street will not, and that means that we will have a hundred and fifty-one units of people living in a building that res- just resoundingly floods all the time. It won't matter where you park your car, your car will be underwater. Um, my concern is what is gonna happen in thirty years when the thirty-year mortgages run out, and the, uh, owners of those hundred and fifty-one units come to the town of Bristol looking for a bailout? I, I would love to love this development. I want it so much to work, but I'm very worried that climate change is gonna undermine any kind of living here um, in any kind of way, and I would rather see the town buy this property out now than have to buy out times a hundred and fifty-one thousand. So I, I just, again, I want so much to love this development, but please make sure that if it goes forward, there is some legal document that each of those hundred and fifty-one owners needs to sign saying they will not come after the town of Bristol to recoup the losses of their investment. Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine. Uh, the next speaker is Mary Ann Bergen-Holz.
Well, I think that, um, I really want to thank
Thank you, Dame.
Pardon me? Oh, sorry. Mary Ann, Mary Ann Bergen-Holz, three sixty-six Hope Street. I am in a butter to the project. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity for letting the public speak on this, and I was very interested in all of the questions that the planning board had for the developers. I looked over the, um, applications very carefully, and there are three major things that I'd like to address. One, no one has talked about the expansion of the W P U D, the request for the zoning change, to make the parking lot areas that are in the interior of a historic block that is bounded by historic properties and, um, by, um, homeowners and businesses. Um, and make that a W P U D zone. The W P U D zone is supposed to be limited to, um, mill buildings, historic mill buildings that should be rehabilitated, not to a, uh, empty lots. So that's my first concern. The next thing is, um, Mr. Katz had some very good questions, and I think some other, um, planning board members had questions as well. One was, are there Rhode Island zoning laws, um, that says increased density should only be given in exchange for developers' provisions of a public benefit or amenity? According to our comprehensive plan, um, this would include additional access to water, increased water views and air circulation through openings to the harbor from Thames Street, affordable housing for Bristol's working families, ten percent of the base land area to be kept as public or institutional use, and needed parking to accommodate not only residents but visitors for the benefits of, um, businesses and residents. Please negotiate on this and don't give up where we already are. We would lose all of these benefits that are already included. That is what the developer is asking for. The second question, uh, the third point that I want to make is, I did go over the financial, um, fiscal data that was provided by, um, Mr. Lombardo. And the numbers, um, that they used are not the numbers that are used by the town, um, for the town, uh, based on town data. Using the town's own data, the real number is closer to a loss of six hundred fourteen thousand five hundred seventy-eight dollars per year. And I'll tell you why that is. The discrepancy comes between these numbers based on a developer saying it, its development will use fifteen percent less municipal services than the rest of the people in the town. That it will house forty-four percent fewer students than normal households of similar size in the town, and that it will have twenty percent fewer residents than in similar households in the rest of the town. Realistically, based on town of Bristol figures, the numbers show there will be about three hundred sixty-six residents, not two ninety-five. There will be at least thirty students there, not twenty. And the new residents there, I'm sure, will use the roads, police, fire, public services, and schools as much as everyone else in the town. So please take a very close look at those numbers. They are based on something that isn't real, and they are based to be very conservative. Our taxpayers need to know what this is going to cost us, and if we're getting any benefit out of it. Finally, this project is probably eligible for forty-five percent tax credits in historic tax credits. We, as taxpayers, are essentially building forty-five percent of this building. When people don't understand tax credits, it's actually real money that goes back into the pockets of the developers. As a result of the plan that they've just put forth, we, as, we are not going to be receiving over three million dollars a year in revenue. The developers will. The taxpayers in town will be forced to pay over six hundred thousand dollars in addition for paying for forty-five percent of the project. Please keep all that in mind. This is a project that any developer would love to have as is. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And the next speaker is Nancy Chase.
Hi, Diane, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I'm Nancy Chase. Um, uh, my family were in a butter to the property on twenty-one Constitution Street. Um, I appreciate all the work that everyone's done, and I think everyone in the neighborhood is excited about the potential reuse of the building. That said, as a butters, we are concerned with sort of the change of how we are going to experience, you know, our properties and the neighborhood, um, any shifts to sort of the change in the character of the neighborhood, and concerns of how people who are sharing the shared amenities downtown are gonna come into town and perhaps not have the bandwidth to have parking or other amenities that they're normally experiencing. I will say, you know, downtown, we roll with the punches. We do have those bars emptying at night. We're accustomed to some noise in the front of our properties, and the hustle and bustle of downtown and the different, you know, Fourth of July and other events. What we're not accustomed, uh, you know, the, the, the biggest piece we have in our neighborhood is our backyards. What abuts our property, which is going to be twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week residential parking with lighting, and, um, residential parking lit up in the evenings is new to us. Uh, we have a hammock in the corner of our property. It is actually the quietest part of our property that abuts what is the future to be that parking lot. It's been a grassy lot. It's been gravel. Um, I appreciate the analysis Friends of Historic Bristol does. I don't believe that any of those empty lots should be swept into this new development zone. I think that entire, uh, parking lot should be restricted with, um, you know, ground-level parking. Only any priorities for excess space should to shore up the buffer zone. Um, I've been told by an architect that no, that no matter what runoff uh, remediation is done by paving that entire parking lot, puddles in our yards, and we're gonna have other impacts to our properties. Like, I really want to love this development. I really want this for the town of Bristol. I don't want our property to be diminished in the meantime, to have lights in our kitchen from the, from the parking lot, to have noise pollution, exhaust, beeping of cars, um, unlocking and locking, trash compactors, you know, waste sites, any sort of mechanicals in that parking lot. I just wish that whatever's done, if, if you could just remediate, you know, what's happening in that parking lot and give, you know, try to give the neighborhood is you know, what's happening in that parking lot and give, you know, try to give the neighborhood as much peace as we can, because we do deal with a lot. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Nancy. Um, it looks like there are no other hands raised at this point. Um, it is almost ten o'clock. So, um, we can call for other speakers or if you want to just take, take the moment now to just continue it to the February meeting and, um, ask for the developer to prepare a response to the questions and comments from tonight. Um, no, okay. Let me know where you wanna go then, Jerome.
Oh, no. Like I stated, this meeting should be over at ten o'clock. If they want a response to it, have it at the next meeting.
Okay, that's what I, yeah, that's what I was thinking. I didn't state, I didn't state that clearly, but that was my, uh, that was my thought. So.
It's the pleasure of the board, though. I'm only one vote. If the, if the board wants them to respond.
Um, I wasn't thinking that they would respond tonight. I was thinking that you would continue it, keep the public hearing open, but direct them to respond um, for the next meeting. I think you should, I think you should keep the public, um, unless Andy believes otherwise, I think you should keep the public informational meeting open, just, just allow, you know, so that more information can be submitted.
Right. You, you have to. You have, if you're gonna have them respond, you have to keep the public information meeting open.
Okay.
So it would be a continuation of the public information meeting to, what is that date in February, Diane?
It's February eleventh, uh, the second Thursday. Sorry, um, it's February tenth, the second Thursday.
Yep, okay.
All right, I, I'd like to make a motion that we continue the public hearing on this until the February meeting.
We're here second.
I'll second that.
Tony made the motion. Armin Biladi seconded. Um, um, roll call vote, um, um, Armin Biladi.
Aye.
Stephen Katz.
Aye.
Chuck Mallard. Tony Mergo.
Aye.
Jerome Squatrito.
Aye.
Okay. So for everyone on the call, this will be continued to the February planning board meeting.
I think it was a very good meeting tonight. I think a lot was accomplished. There's a lot more to be accomplished. So.
I'm sorry, Chuck. You're, um, really coming in with a reverberation.
I'm sorry.
Couldn't make it out.
Me neither.
You're very, very reverberating.
See you next month.
Yeah, okay. We still need a motion to adjourn.
So many emotions to check. Yeah.
So Tony made the motion.
I'll second.
Right, uh, Brian, I think, um, have to get.
I'll second.
Yeah, Jerome was seconded, okay. Um, all in favor? Um, Armin.
Aye.
Stephen.
Aye.
Uh, Chuck Mallard.
Aye.
Tony Mergo. Tony Mergo.
Aye.
Jerome Squatrito.
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, good night, everybody.
Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See you next month.
Okay.